I only use it to watch the weather. So you can put my chair by the fire.
We are live and recording.
Thank you, dear. Shall we rise for the pledge this morning, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We're gonna open our, we have minutes of our select board meeting held on July seventeenth. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Okay, our first order under new business is our new voting machine update. Is that you, Jen?
Yes, Mr. Nix.
Mr. Nix? Yeah, oh. He's back.
Oh, you want me to take it? Together, yes. This is a group project. So, as you guys know, we've hosted a couple of demos here in the town of Belmont, the surrounding towns, of the two approved voting machines approved by the state.
Here, just pass them over to the people. Just the brochure they gave us, you folks, to look at it, we usually.
Yes.
Does, all we care about is that it works.
Yes. They're both, like, they're really cool. That Voting Works one was very, very cool, but it, um, there's a lot of extra work. There's three separate components. The cost is about five hundred dollars more than the other one. Um, there's three separate components that aren't compatible with anything else. You have to buy your laptop, your box, and your printer from this company. Um, it was really cool. But another downside for that one was all the write-in votes that we get, if anybody's ever worked in election year, we get a ton of them, had to enter individually into the system. But the reporting was very slick because it all came on one piece paper that was like this, instead of these long tapes. Um, the other one, the Image Cast, is from the maker of our current voting machine. Um, so one of the upsides of that is it was very, very, very compatible to what we were used to using in all the elections that we've done so far. The downside to that one is the box is huge. It's, it's gotta be almost like, it's human, it's so storage is gonna be kind of annoying and moving it will be bad. But, um, it is what it is. But we, Al, myself, and the supervisor of the checklist, all had a meeting after we demoed the second machine, and we've come to the conclusion that we want to purchase the Image Cast from LHS. Um, I did make some notes. The whole machine is seven thousand dollars, and then we can get the thirty-five hundred dollar rebate from the state that I, we made you aware of, uh, I think a couple meetings ago. Yearly maintenance cost is three hundred and fifty dollars after the first year. There's a one-year warranty, and then after that is the three hundred and fifty for the annual maintenance. And all parts are covered. And if the machine is, you know, like, needs to be significantly repaired, they give you a loaner. Um, there's upgrades roughly every eighteen to twenty-four months, and the techs will come right out to do that for us. LHS is located in Salem. Um, fun fact, the guy who came to do the demo forgot all of his stuff. It will, like, his test ballots and so on and so forth, so he cut the machine, but he didn't have anything to demonstrate it with. So we called, and they were there within four to three minutes. So that's a good response time for if something goes wrong during an election. Like I said, it's very similar to what we're used to. And yeah, so that is the machine.
So this is the one that's the bigger one?
Yeah.
The bigger one?
Because it'll be able to fit.
Okay, versus the other one with three different components? I'm thinking to myself, okay, three different things.
But that one's like, folds all up, it's storage organized, but yeah.
Yeah, the Voting Works one folded up. It was, that was a very convenient aspect of it. But I, but, so, that's the nice part about it. But then they hang two moving parts, create moving probes. That's number one. But number two would bug me the most was, as you see, there's a, it's, it's got a box. You fold, you put the box back together again. These hold five thousand ballots, by the way. Both of these machines hold five thousand ballots. And there's a valid reason for that because voters get anxious when hearing a hauling stuff.
All hauling stuff out, yeah.
I get the seven hundred in that, in the current voting machine, and I gotta empty it because I know it's gonna jam. So these hold five thousand. But, so the folding one was really nice, but that black box, that component, he had trouble joining that onto the machine. And that bugged me. I didn't like that because whether it's not, the machine wiggles or what it does. And so my concern is over time, what's, what's gonna happen in terms of those components matching? And what kind of problems can that create? That was my number concern. I absolutely hate the Image Cast voting box. It is a hippopotamus. It really is. It's huge. And the, and the other part about it is, is that you, you vote, let's say it's, it's, it's kind of like this big, but it's just, it's ugly.
Square, big and square.
It's, it's just massive.
I can't say anything different about it, it's, it's ugly.
Yeah.
So the, the problem with it is, is that, um, you have, you, you'll put your ballots in on the front end, and then on the, on the, on the hippopotamus's mouth, and then the tail ends where you're gonna have to put your hand count votes, which means you'll figure how to, you know, we can accommodate it during most, most voting because we only have that one box. But I still got the school box, so I gotta figure out how to get people to be able to put that in without me saying, hand it to me and I'll put it in, because people don't like that, which is okay.
Could you, just a thought, because I know you're all, you know, we sit at a table and the box is down here, so to speak. Could you have maybe the school box separate from that?
Oh, absolutely. There's all kinds of, yeah.
Yeah, because that way you might be able to have a person there with the typical school box that they have at this point, right? And then maybe the other, it's just a thought.
Well, we could just push the committee table down a little more and then, you know, make that.
Right out the door.
Well, you know, we're dealing with also the issue of, uh, concern about, we've gotta get, we have to replace, this is a side issue.
Yeah.
We've gotta replace some of the voting booths. So the question is, do we get tables and then put those box, those folders on them? But that pushes the rail out more, and that creates problems of trying to, so we got a space issue. But anyway, we're gonna, we're, we can solve all this.
But we don't really have a space issue. Out, the whole rest of the gym is empty.
Media.
Yeah, but we're the minds that are waiting to get checks in.
Ours, ours, ours.
Yeah.
Somehow ours clog the system. I mean, I don't know if you remember, in other sense, the R's.
It's not seen ours, we say the letter R.
Yeah.
Yeah, all these people, all the people who last name are beginning with R, come, come in, it just seems like it's same time. So we have to meet that ten-minute rule for getting them through. But anyway, we recommend to the selectmen that they purchase the Image Cast. Uh, it does, it's very compatible with some of the, the stuff that we have. They're very local. The fellow even told me from Voting Works, they're almost out of like mass in Connecticut, and they don't have the people to put on a problem like Image Cast currently has, to be able to get, to be able to get to solve a problem. So that, that's another issue. They're new in the area. Uh, you know, maybe over time that, it'll turn out to be okay, but, you know, it's just a matter of, they're not really ready to, to launch in terms of coming and giving us the support we need when we need it. But when you see that box, you're gonna curse me.
Now, do you have to still do the, um, you know, how we have to do the chip for every voting with the one we have? The old, the origi, the one we have now, right?
It's a key.
Oh, it's a key.
It's much smaller.
You have two cards.
All right.
You're not gonna have that.
Whatever.
You're gonna have these two cards that operate, it's dual. She'll have one, I'll have one, or you'll have one, and I'll have one, and that's how they're gonna.
He's giving me one, yeah.
Yeah, well, we only get them voting day. It's just like the card, it's only good for voting day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that way you get double coverage, more security. So, that's really, and, and it was, I mean, you have to admit, the Image Cast machine looks very, very much like the current machine that we have, but they put a, they put a video window on it so people can actually see information that they're looking for in terms of votes, uh, cast, in terms of, I think I also talked about.
Doesn't it say ballot counted or some, it says something when your ballot goes in and makes a joyful noise? So like, you know, your ballot has gone into that machine, which I think will be really good, but, you know.
We have a few that, yeah, 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 we have a few that are.
Well, sometimes we remember, yeah, but that was, that was also a combination of that jamming problem. You get to like seven hundred and sixty ballots in the current box.
Yeah.
With this one taking five thousand, but at least, in them, when I jammed, you didn't know whether, it would say ballot counted, ballot not. But the ballot's halfway in, and so you got all these questions that you're contending with. So people can look right at that window and see, yes, your ballot was counted, because they ask me, why are you casting your ballot? Well, we can do it this way and say, here's why. And the machine is telling us that's correct.
So it's definitely updated version of what we have now.
Well, I guess that's, that's you guys' gig, right? I mean, go Travis.
Just to clarify for the record, uh, why are we buying a new machine again?
Uh, it's the requirement, the old machine.
You guys did that.
I don't want, I don't want anyone to say we're spending money that we don't need to spend. I know we did it.
Yeah.
I just want it to be said.
Yes.
I think it's, I think it's, uh, by the end of twenty twenty-five, these machines, the current machine is not gonna be supported. And one of the, one of the hopes that I had, I don't really like to change paddles in the middle of the street, you know? So I didn't want to use, I didn't want to recommend buying a new machine for the president, the primary, the presidential election. I had, you know, we haven't had experience with it, so we were hoping that maybe we could get it for the town elections so we can get that experience with it, or even still next year. I don't, I think we only have one, one vote session.
Yeah, just the town next year.
So when we get it in, we, we've got a chance to use it and feel comfortable with it. Not that it's, it doesn't seem greatly different in terms of what we need to do, it's just.
So this thing isn't gonna come in till next year?
Well, we need to order, I think there's six months backlog, so we would order it, but we don't wanna put it into service until next year just because the next two elections are gonna be hugely attended.
And then the following two elections after that, both are town elections, so it gives you two town elections before any state election.
Yes.
Next year is just town, yeah.
Yeah, there's no state.
And then the next year would be town.
Count again, then state.
Yeah.
I, I hate to tell you this, I really don't, but I think it's an important thing.
No, what?
One of the, one of the things I asked them is, is there any way that this machine could potentially support a ballot from both the town and the school?
No.
And then it got all fuzzy and we couldn't understand the answer, right?
So, they said potentially, so I just need you to.
So what that means is, is that the school, the school has a ballot? So that means that if it doesn't, they're gonna be forced to buy a new machine, or they're gonna, yeah, yeah.
Two, because they would need running cameras.
Well, they don't use one, yeah. They only have.
Yeah, yeah, they count.
They bring the box and then they.
Right, they, that's right, they bring the box to Belmont, and then we shall put them in, put them through.
So that's, you know, we did the, June, in June, we, we, we watched the Voting Works demo, and in July, we watched the Image Cast. So, you know, we're pretty familiar with it. We had, like you said, Donna Shepard, uh, and Brendan Pottcat were there. I think Nikki came for one of them. And there were also other people from other towns.
Yeah, we invited all the surrounding area to come and take a look because this impacts all town clerk, tax collectors, and voting officials, so, yeah.
Mark, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick one. Are we gonna need to fund a truck with a lift gate for this thing?
Yes, 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 sir.
It has to be transported, right?
We'll, we'll empty it, Lisa will empty it, we hope, so it won't be that heavy, but it's.
It is big.
Is it heavy, or is it just big? It's just bulky?
DPW has new dump truck.
Yeah, it's real big.
And all due respect of our, to the folks who moved it, I think you can beat this thing around a bit and not have to worry about ripping it when you can.
I think he mentioned that at the demo, that you don't have to be quite so, because it doesn't, like, it doesn't have that moving part in there with the.
Don't, don't.
Well, this is, yeah, yeah, don't, don't. This says seventy-five pounds.
That's the Voting Works, that's the one where we don't.
That's the one that I'm not, yeah. Sounds collapsible.
You can borrow the trailer back.
No, I thought that's, this one says Voting Works.
Oh, and the Image Cast, yeah, seventy-five pounds? Yeah, it's huge.
Put it on poles.
That's right, for pole it up.
So it must be on clothes, it must be on rollers. So nothing comes off in that? You don't take top?
Well, you do separate.
You still, you, you take the top off in it?
Right.
When you're done with that?
Separate from the box.
Okay.
Because you gotta keep that secure.
Right, and then you have another container that that voting, this top part goes into to keep it clean and whatever.
And that's, that's a little bit bigger than a laptop, the old school, like, the laptop, and then we have, we keep that in the vault in the office.
Got it. So basically what you've got to store is the base of it?
Yeah.
More or less?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which isn't gonna be that, if you're.
Ask one more.
Yep, you may ask.
One more loaded question?
One more, you know.
Completely loaded, because I've already asked this before. Does this only connect to power? No internet, no Bluetooth?
There is no internet, no Bluetooth. It does have a battery backup that lasts up to six hours.
So just power goes to it?
Just power.
In case the lights go out?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, okay.
You charge it just like the front generator.
Okay.
But no, it is not Wi-Fi and you won't have.
Thank you.
Oh, because that prevents people from, um, connecting to it? That's what, Chair, got it. Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Do you have a motion for you? If you guys would like to move on?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the town clerk, tax collector, town admin, uh, town moderator, and purchase a new voting machine from LHS, where they cope not exceed seven thousand dollars minus any grant funds received from the state of New Hampshire. If approved, funds to come from the Election Equipment Capital Reserve Fund previously established.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Um, the motion passes. And that is funds that we already have in reserve. We've been helping to do that. And then we just, go.
And now that we have picked one, now you can apply for the grant. I think that was just the stipulation, you had to pick one off.
We just had, in, had your choice.
Months to go, either to purchase the machine, or you could purchase the laptop or whatever needs to go.
There's some other, it's, um, it's like a check-in, you know, how you check in and they have the paper books. It's to replace that, but I don't believe that the supervisors are comfortable with that at this time, so. We're gonna use it for the.
And then there are funds for, because we need additional boosts. Do we need the boosts, or do we do the table things?
We're kinda still in discussions on which we prefer, um.
I mean, I just noticed the last couple of years, more and more people are sitting down at the tables, yeah.
But for spatial reasons.
I know, for, right.
We do not, can't say it emphatically enough, want another voting. We don't want to split the works and want one voting location because works are just messy and we have to twice the.
Well, you need that many more volunteers.
Yeah, so.
Or staff, however you do that.
So, it's just, yeah, we're still working on that. The purchase of those were also coming across the same.
Right, right. I know we've been putting some money away.
Jen, can I answer your question, Alicia? The problem with the electronic books is if somebody questions something, you still have to have a paper book set in the holder. It's like, so what are we doing with?
Oh, I see. Can't you make two rows of Rs? But then it requires a second book, and then you can't, yeah, you can't do that. Yeah, yeah, that's, or, or, right, or, or make, make one table R, I guess, I don't know.
Actually, the Rs and the Ts, because there's a lot of Ts, too, and they just.
Just a suggestion.
Our supervisors are very good at what they do.
Oh, yeah.
I, I try to do all that, okay, fine.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you very much.
All right.
Again, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Al. Have fun.
I will.
Okay. Hi, good Brian. DPW Road, twenty twenty-four Road Projects.
Morning.
Good morning.
One too many rows in there.
Yeah, like I said, we have, we've, we've kind of got a wrench sort of into our road plan this.
Well, we know that because the budget didn't pass, we know.
You know what our original intent was to, uh, rebuild, uh.
Middle Road.
Middle Road, that kind of, that would put us kind of in a financial strain, so.
Yeah.
We've tried, and we've been throwing around what we should do and what, what is gonna be the most cost-effective way to do it. So, um, we have decided that we, we believe we should, we should, um, definitely do something with the Main Street situation. It's starting to fall apart, a certain section, certain lane, and.
Holes.
Yes, and there's, there's a, there's a certain machine, there's two of them in New England. So, I mean, I kind of did it behind everybody's back, but I, I kind of reserved it three months ago, because that's the only way to get it. And it's the only really way to do this right, so. But on a good note, um, the price of AC, asphalt content, because the gas prices are down, the state takes that price, so we're gonna save about three, four dollars a ton.
Oh, nice.
On the mix.
Yeah.
That being said, um, I got some, I got a quote on doing, uh, Duda Road, uh, which is gonna be about, this is shoulder gravel, to do, do the whole thing to a shim, straighten the road out, and do an oval on that, it's about two hundred and fifteen dollars. And that's total, that's just an estimate, I think it's gonna come in light, I think it's gonna come in lighter, but I think that's, I think that's something we should really do while the construction is done, uh, on that piece of road, so most of the heavy equipment traffic is finally done over with, so I think it would be a really good time to do that. It's getting to the point where.
And these are, these are monies from our highway block grant monies?
Yeah, and, and we do have, um, we do have capital reserve money, but like I said, we're just trying to like, I'm just, I'm just nervous that if we don't get anything passed next year, that we have to, the things that we really have to do, we should probably maybe, you know.
I get nervous about these, these torrential rains, and, I mean, we've seen it up north and the, and the road damage and stuff that we, I personally would like to see monies in the capital left alone because of, who knows?
The funeral will come through, something like that?
Right, but not.
Normally help us out, but you have to, you have to initially come up with that money.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I think, I think, like I said, I don't wanna dip into the cockers too bad, you know?
Sure.
So, but I think, like I said, I think Duda Road is, is a priority, and I think, um, fixing Main Street's a priority. I think, I think, this isn't a, this isn't a very expensive, I'd say not very expensive, I think. We're gonna, while we're fixing this, we've got that section over by, um, on Memorial Drive there. Um, I'd like to fix that. We get this, this week, this machine comes in and actually displaces the asphalt, picks it up, and it can do certain widths and.
And, and, so you'll repair the intersection to School Street that just.
We're gonna do that, we're gonna do a section of that lane coming right up, right up Main Street in two different sections.
Yeah.
And do, but, the machine is the si, is the same machine that we got on Church Street three, four years ago, and we fixed that, and that's held up, it's, it's held up wonderful, so.
Does anybody have any, I mean, I'm, I'm not a, you know, that's, that's you guys.
It's a pretty conservative road, you know, I mean, it really is. Like I said, it's a really good time to do it, because the cost savings on the AC is, is, is gonna.
I have no issue with Lisa, I call it.
No, no, anyone have any?
Um, I don't have any answers with this one, I did have a road question.
Yeah.
Dearborn Street. Where is that on a priority list?
What street?
Dearborn Street.
Dearborn Street.
Is horrendous.
So I can, I can answer that one.
Sure.
So for right now, Dearborn Street, we're gonna go out and do some more engine, and just, we'll invest a day or two and a few kind of hot topic and make it better.
Okay, cool.
Mike, the problem we have with Dearborn Street, and, so there's infrastructure in that street. So, once you start, you know, we, we did some streets years ago, down by the monument, and we paved them, and, you know, realistically, everybody talks about infrastructure, but when you do some of those streets that you've got problems on, you should probably Johnson Street, when we, we should have replaced the water line. So, Dearborn Street's one of those situations where, you know, we haven't had much trouble with it.
But it's old.
But, you know, that, that water line's from the sixties. So if you're gonna reconstruct that road, we paved that road, it's something that, but, and it's all, but, but that's all about funding.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if you're gonna start doing infrastructure and stuff like that, I mean, you gotta start putting money away to do that, you know?
Basically, uh, before we throw two hundred grand at paving it, we definitely wanna explore the options of doing the water.
Absolutely makes sense. I was just curious because I remember when we had the state guy and we were talking about, um, the fixes that could or could not happen for Main Street, and, you know, Sleitman Moody is very correct when she's like, a lot of those people cut off. And I actually had to go to the church, and I was like, oh, there's a bunch of people. And I took it, and I hadn't been over there in a while, and I was like, wow, this is, but yeah, no, it makes sense, okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, I mean, we, we know it's, it's not the best, but like I said, I think we could, and we could shim it up a little bit and fix it, so. It, it is on the list.
We forgot one question, sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, do you see any issues having to be addressed this year with Middle Route, or we just can push it off one year, you think?
I talked to Alicia about that yesterday. I mean, we do have some block grant money, so if we may, before the begin, before the beginning of winter, go out there with just a few, have, have our paving contractor, when there were just a few loads of mix, and just do a, do a shim on some of the really bad spots. Because there are two or three bad spots, ones next to Sun, like Sun's, uh, Sun's House, that's, we may have to do. And it's just a little bit too much for us to do by hand or with a grader, and it's actually, it's actually, I mean, we can get, we can get machine work done by our contractor for about fifty to twenty dollars a ton cheaper than we can buy the mix that much.
There you go.
It's, it's the most cost-effective way to do it, and that's probably what we will.
Obviously, in hopes that we can get it in the budget and get passed next year so that we can, uh, I, I think you might, I think you might, um, you might get better, I think you might get people from Middle Route out to vote when they realize that it, what happened this year because they didn't come out and vote.
People, they're out, down to it, it's down there. Well, unfortunately, it failed by like fourteen votes.
I heard, all right.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully we can get back on our program, because, I mean, I'm, I'm watching meetings and, you know, Franklin City Council and stuff like that, and I don't know if you guys have driven up on those roads.
I was here this morning. Franklin, is it West Franklin? To go out, go, oh my God.
I, I know a couple people that are actually gonna get involved in government over there, because they're just, you know, they, they were, they were talking about putting like five hundred thousand dollars into roads, and that's gonna be like, that, that's not even gonna be a.
Oh, I couldn't believe it.
No, but they're still operating under that tax cap they voted on.
Oh, they have.
Oh, is that what it is?
They, they're so bad for towns.
But they, but they, but they also get block grant money. So they probably get, and I don't know what they get from block grant.
What was that?
Bikes blasting.
Oh, okay.
Thought the building was coming down for a second, like, uh-oh.
Yeah, no, we can't fail.
Guess, guess we're not going Israel after all, the company is.
Is there no question?
Okay, all right. We'll go on to the mill drainage project, because that's what?
There's a motion to make.
Oh, we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we had a motion here.
I'll move to approve the suggested twenty twenty-four road project as presented by DPW Director.
Give a second.
I'll second.
We got seconds all around. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none, that motion passes. Um, now we'll move on to the mill drainage project.
Yes, so this is something that Ryan and I looked at. We think we've come up with a good plan to fix it. I know Patrick had gotten some quotes and stuff, and it's, their idea was kind of similar to what we're planning on doing, um, but I think we can do it substantially cheaper. I made some, you know, some rough estimates for equipment rental and, um, material, um, to do the project. What we, what we basically wanna do is we wanna take all this water off the roof that's going into the stone and acting like a, a wick that, that's actually going down to the foundation, and we wanna just, we wanna take out all that stone, um, we wanna put like, put some gravel in and then do an impervious layer, like maybe pavement or something, or concrete, about, out of about four feet. And then beyond that, we'll put all, we'll put it pitching away from the building, and then beyond that, we're gonna go down eighteen inches and put a four-inch drain pipe to catch all that water. And then we're gonna put them right out to, there's two catch bases on each side of the, each side of the mill. And we'll direct all that water right away from the building. And I think, I think, uh, my, my estimate is about forty-five hundred dollars by the time I rent a machine, pay for the gravel, pay for the pipe, pay for the asphalt, um, of course, that's not the label look, find a time to do it, but.
That's just for that side of the building, or not the whole entire building?
That, that's for the front, and then.
The whole front of the building.
The whole front of the building.
Oh. Now, the question.
Yeah.
Only because I deal with sweating concrete a lot, and we don't really know what's underneath this concrete.
Maybe.
Underneath the, let's think about the slab that this building sits on, I'm sure it's not a slab, but let's just think about that. And, because I know that there's a lot of sweating going on downstairs, all right? And how do you prevent something like that, dehumidifiers?
Basically, yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's what I thought.
The first step is to take this wa-
Get this water away, I, that's what I.
All, I mean, you figure the square footage of this roof is huge.
Yeah, it is.
When you get, when you get an inch to a rain, all that, when, all that rain is ending up down in your stone down here, and that's acting like a wick, we don't even know where those pipes are going. So, if, you know, if you look at most old buildings like this, you'll notice that, that, like the old Gale School, they, they pave a certain way out, away from the building at an angle, to get the water away from the building.
From the building.
Here, where, here we, we're attracting water.
Mm-hmm.
To be taken into the stone, into this pipe, so if we, if we do, if we do a layer of, you know, I, I say asphalt, but in, and, if you don't like the color, we could, you know, we could get some colored sealers and do something like that to match the building.
Oh, one more thing to have to re- keep up, but, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, so, but I, but I think, like I said, we'll have to cork them, have to get some elevations and coordinate these manholes, I wanna get these, get these catch bases cleaned out, um, we'll have somebody do that, so. I, I think when they're approved, we'll just, we'll try it, I think that's the, I think it's the most cost effective first step.
First step, well.
What do you think, Patrick, do you think that's?
Yeah, my question. Also, I think that we wanna consider putting a gutter on the, on the end of the roof.
And that's what I was gonna say, about gutters.
And to try to direct it to where you're going, I think that would help also.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I say this is the first step, if we run into any problems after this, we, we could, we could go that second route.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, keeping the water away from that porous granite, uh, stone that we have there will help a lot.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll literally take that stone out, we'll replace it with crushed gravel, compact it.
Yeah, great.
And then, and then put a layer of pavement on top of that.
I'll still be interested in knowing what's, what you run into as far as the foundation goes.
We're not gonna go that deep.
Yeah, but you're gonna go somewhat that you're gonna be able to.
Depending on how deep the stone is, we'll probably excavate out about a foot.
Yeah.
Take about a foot of the bad material out and put the good material in.
Yeah, okay.
So you're seeing forty-five hundred bucks or?
I think, that's my estimate, so, yeah, so what I'd like to do, I, I mean, I wanna rent a little excavator, a small, cause.
You don't need a huge one.
We're gonna cause more.
Damage.
More, yeah, exactly, so, the less, the less intrusion we do to everything else, you know, they.
You can do a rubber track one even, if you can, yeah.
Like rent a little, a main excavator for, for a week and go from there.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and obviously, the forty-five hundred dollar estimate is, is, because who knows what he might run into.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, Patrick?
I'm pretty confident that.
Yeah.
I just have a question, are we gonna do anything about the slope that slopes towards that side entrance door, cause the water wants to travel to, to that door?
That low door on the far end?
On the far end, we, we are, Brian and I talked about, we do a plan, so.
I have a, I have a quote for the replacement of the doors.
Yeah, we see that, oh, is that the one further down?
Yeah, for down this door, right?
Yeah.
Right now, we've repaired it, uh, we did, uh, recently put, uh, a water sleeve out front, so the water can't come in, and we also put a draft thing, so, cause there's a gap in that door.
Yeah.
Uh, the door is the ninety-seven year, uh, it's ninety-eight hundred dollars to do that door replacement, uh, for bottom page of stone, because I had, and I was shocked when I got it, got the price, but it's because of masonry work, that door's embedded into the masonry, so, not only do you get a, get a carpenter in here, but you get a mason to cut out, to put in the door, and, so the ninety-eight hundred dollars is from bottom page of stone.
Okay, all right, um, that's further down, right?
Uh, I think it's maybe in the old, but I was gonna kind of pair them with this discussion too.
Yeah, all right, all right, so.
I just mentioned we've been solving Saint Paul.
Is that the only quote that you received was from Lana?
Oh, the ri- the only written quote, yes.
And Patrick brought me that yesterday, and, um, I was talking about the project with Craig, and mentioned it to him as well, and asked if he wouldn't mind reaching out to any local contractors, people that he works with too, to see.
Yeah, we can get.
Also get an idea and work as well, just because.
I think that that's, yeah.
Well, my, so, in, in my travels this morning, I, I ran into Everett's attorney.
Okay.
Mark, and he's been a mason for a.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I was just talking to him about it.
Sure.
Well, let's go look at it, and he came up, and he came up and looked at it, and he said, I, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty, there's a lot to do, but it's not that difficult.
Mm-hmm.
And he said, there's basically a solder course, a brick up, up, up on top of the door for the header, he said, and if you could actually take, I don't know, I don't know if that plan called for you, could actually take that out and put like a little piece of steel in there, you could raise that door up three or four inches.
I was, yeah.
Then you could get the water away from the building, most, Everett knows what he's doing, so, he said he actually thinks he knows a couple of guys that may be interested, so, I, I'm gonna let him do his thing for a few days and.
Yeah.
See, he's gonna reach out to a couple of guys and see if that, so, were they planning on moving that door up at all, you know?
Uh, they were just gonna basically replace it, cause we were gonna grade it, like you said, we were gonna grade the water away from the door.
Yeah, sure. Cause you think if we took that solder course out, plus we, put a piece, piece angle iron up there, we could raise that door up three or four inches?
Yeah, it would strengthen the door.
It would, and it would just give us that much more pitch away from the door.
You need to make sure you're ADA compliant.
Yep.
Which is, it's great on the outside, but then when you come inside, you're gonna have drops, so as long as you're cutting.
Yep.
Particulars around that.
That's a good point.
Well, I'll worry about the outside, Patrick, I'll worry about the inside.
That's what they make, gradual ramp, right?
So.
Gonna be, but it's gonna be.
I, I wasn't trying to step on anybody's toes, Patrick, but we just, I kinda saw him this morning, and I'm like, he's just a really good resource, and, you know? And I didn't even think of it until I was down there with the, with the car, so.
So right now, we have the door sealed, uh, we put an outdoor, we put a strip there, so I was really, really nervous with this water.
Mm-hmm.
It's coming weekend.
Yeah.
So when you open the door, Donna, you're gonna hear a straight little bit, that's the plastic seal, rubber seal that we put on the.
It goes out, it doesn't come in.
It does now.
Or door goes, that door swoons out.
Right, and when it, it does come out.
Oh, okay, and that's fine.
We adjusted it so it slams, so it's working, and we just wanted to make sure she was able to use the door and also keep the water out until we decide what we want to do.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, if, if you can follow up on that, I think that would be a, a good source to get another, oh, idea on that.
Yeah.
Do you guys agree?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
Do you have a motion if you want to approve that drainage project? Not the door yet, but just the drainage part.
So I'll make the motion to approve the mill drainage project as presented by the DPW Director.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes, thank you. Um, the next thing is mill water break, oh, that's Patrick, okay. This is what's known as revolving chairs this morning, okay, no water break.
Two, two weeks ago, we came in on Monday, uh, and discovered that during the weekend, we had a pipe that burst on the second floor of the mill, uh, ran all weekend, uh, we were very fortunate that the break, the water from the second floor that came down to the first floor did not affect Donna's office, it came into the large meeting area, um, we were able to locate the break, and actually, the shut-off worked.
Okay.
We were able to shut the water down, and it took us about, three guys, about three hours to, uh, do the cleanup, there was a lot of water. No physical damage other than some stain on some sheep rock, uh, the water pooled and came down through some open areas of where the pipes were, so we were lucky. At that point, what we did, we proceeded, there are three bathrooms and a kitchen and a half on the second floor. We proceeded to go to each one to see if the shut-offs worked, that's when we discovered that ninety percent of them are frozen or broke.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they were originally put in in the ninety-seven renovation, um, so the only way, if we have another, if we have a break on one of the, on one of the sinks or whatever, we'd have to shut the water off to the mill, uh, which we know how to do, uh, but it would affect the entire mill, not the water sys- the, uh.
Yeah, sprinkler system, yeah.
My recommendation is, and what I would like to do, is get a licensed plumber in here and change off those individual shut-off valves, and the braided hoses that go to each sink in each bathroom, uh, so we can not have this problem, uh.
And that's where the break occurred?
Right, it, it, one of the braided hoses is going to a sink.
Okay.
Uh, the fourth floor, that was all done on renovation, the third floor, that was all individually shut off when the doctors.
Doctors left anyways.
Shut off, there's still water to the third floor, but it's in the wall, uh, and we can shut that out by the main. Uh, and the first floor, we just have the kitchen and, and the, uh, one-on-one bathroom. So, my recommendation is that we get that, we address that, and at the same time, in the kitchen, when the senior group was here, there, they left a old dishwasher that's been in there years and years, that we took out of service.
Right.
I'd like to get that removed and capped off, so we don't have a hidden problem or something burst on that.
Because I know that, um, in the renovation, when we're moving town hall over here, is that the bathrooms are all staying where they are anyways, so, it, that's not a issue as far as, um, so this is basically, this is maintenance.
This is maintenance.
This is maintenance.
This is prevented, this is prevented maintenance.
Prevented maintenance, yeah.
And what I would like to do is reach out to Chadwick's, um, only because he's familiar with this building, cause we did the fourth floor,
Yeah.
and we also, he did the police station, and the service we get out of those folks is outstanding.
Yeah.
We called Jeff, and he's here, he, he's just like, oh, he's our electrician, Chadwick's has come, and he takes care of things, and it's absolutely no problem. I will get a quote from him and present that, but I would like to reach out and, and follow through with that, with your opinion.
Yeah, I don't, do we absolutely have to have a quote to do, um?
Maintenance.
Maintenance?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
I mean, unless everyone has a problem with that, I mean, you know, it's.
I'm thinking a thousand dollars, twelve hundred dollars to do everything, uh, to get the valves replaced, put the new braided hoses in, and take care of that, um, so we, we don't have that problem coming.
Question?
I'd make a motion, we set it at fifteen hundred, give them a open checkbook for fifteen hundred, not to exceed.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's maintenance, I mean, it's, it's.
We write it into the minutes and we've done it, we, we've approved the monies.
Yeah. All right.
I'll second it.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any opposition? Hearing none? I'm banking, but yeah, I'm fine.
Yes.
Hearing none, that motion passes, I mean, it's just, to me, it's maintenance.
Maintenance process.
Yeah.
So they can't say we slid it off somewhere.
Right, well, we wanna, we wanna keep, you know, to me, it's important that we keep this stuff up, because obviously, it's gonna be less things as we move in here that we've got to address, okay, um, any questions?
I just have a comment.
Yeah, I, I thought, yeah.
Moving forward.
Yeah.
Especially on the first floor.
Yeah.
I would strongly encourage the thought process to be different for floor covering and carpet, the condensation that develops on the other end is called rip.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's.
Cross across that floor, and that has a rubber back, so it's, it's still bleeding through, and it isn't from, you know, like, rain in, you know, or in the overflow of what we've had before.
Yeah.
We put the humidifier in there, and I mean, it's like every day, you come pulling.
Sure. That's the unfor- that's the unfortunate thing with concrete floors, you know, con- concrete pad floors, you're gonna get condensation, no ifs, and or buts. But again, once it's occupied, I as- once it's occupied, there's gonna be AC in the summer, which obviously prevents condensation, and in the wintertime, you're gonna have heat, and, and you do a dehumidifier, and you do however we do that, I mean, that's gonna be important, that we have those things in place, and I totally agree, I think tile of some sort versus carpeting on a floor where you're gonna have the traffic that you're gonna have, is gonna be far easier to maintain than.
Well, that's on that ground floor.
Especially.
All concrete.
Especially.
I mean, and even the walls coming up, it's worth behind the, um, sheep rock and stuff, so it's, no matter how you look at it.
Sure, sure. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You're gonna chase, you're gonna chase.
Sure, yeah.
We have a large dehumidifier running, and we do that twice a day.
Of course, sure, because there's no AC down there, there's nothing running in the rest of that.
Oh, there's AC in my office.
Right, but there's.
Going all the time, and that's where this humidifier is, so, that's being, you know?
That's where this, yeah, yeah. Sure, yeah, that's concrete pads.
Usually, the door in the hall and the other might interfere, sort of, from up there, just for the sake that hopefully it's.
Sure. Yeah. Sure, sure, all right, okay.
It's just, it's just information for later, I mean, obviously, we're dealing what we're dealing with, but.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, awesome, um, fire department promotion, Deb.
So as everybody knows, Lieutenant Murphy retired, and he had his last day on Thursday, yes, I think it was, we had a little luncheon formal, whatnot, with the fire department. And in the interim, we started doing promotions, and I had, I initially had five, um, to roll over to drop down to three, it was three internal. Um, had an outside board coming in to interview everybody, and if I had a decision, we can tell, it was Tom Ryan, who, we offered him the job, and he's actually started Sunday, at our, well, pay week, it would've been this past Sunday, but he's doing a week right now of days, and he'll start our rotation next week.
And, and Ryan already worked for us, I'm sure.
Yeah, so he's, he comes to us as a call firefighter.
Okay.
And then, full-time.
All right.
So basically, he's kind of warped up, um.
Awesome.
And thinks that should be happening, so, and that's my goal too, is to start increasing, and I actually talked with him about this the other day, was to start working on building our call department up, so hopefully start raising people, and the same way that Lieutenant Mike has come into this.
Awesome, well, congratulations, Ryan, yeah, nice.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations.
You all right?
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, I'm welcome.
So with that being said, um, Lieutenant has been, is, I have, got him up and running on trying to, to solve our situation with tanker. And I brought you some specs on, kind of a baseline, a baseline tanker, um, that, they're putting these tankers out at least a couple of months, you said? And it's something that could be purchased sooner, they are still a little different than any of the other tankers I've looked at, they're about five hundred thousand dollars now. And as we discussed, we are not fixing that, that last tanker, it has been just basically sitting in the garage.
So that's going to auction, is that what you do with those things?
Well, we can either go to auction, and then Lieutenant Ryan actually talked to the place, this place here, and they do the trades. We don't know what we give for trade right now, they have to come and look at it.
Sure, sure.
What they do with the truck after that is, is theirs, and I know you've had concerns about selling a truck that was damaged.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna be involved in a, in a direct sale to anybody, any public on that truck.
But, but a business like this, we do whatever they wanna do with it.
I understand that, but you weren't talking about a business.
No, I know, we were talking about going to like the White Farm, so, we had a little disclosure, but I don't, we didn't leave that anywhere to the White Farm.
Oh, I see.
So at this point, um, that's where we're at, I know, um, that we talked about, and you brought it up last meeting, and it was about, or no, you brought it up, sorry, Travis. You brought up last meeting about having a, a, a vote, in a sense, an early vote to get this, um, some stuff's been thrown around about saying, why don't we try to buy the one? And actually, the one that we, I talked about a couple of weeks ago is now already sold, um, so these things are flying off the, flying out of there as fast as they're being made. And some of the ones that we're wanting to get, and that's, that one wouldn't be even ready till next June, we looked at, it was already sold, it wouldn't be ready till next June, so, if it goes to a vote, it would be had a week till March, and then, we didn't have anything on it. I don't know how it works with if we were to say, okay, well, wait till March, go, put it on the docket, and say, build us a truck, and then come March, for whatever reason, it gets voted down, and now I say, sorry, I don't want it, I don't wanna be that town or that chief, because then they're not gonna, nobody's gonna want such a thing. When you say, hey, we wanna build this truck, they go, sorry, I wanna make sure we have something in, in the works. Um, and like you say, you brought up about doing an early vote, that it could be a truck that we could get out sooner, and with this setup that Lieutenant was working on, which actually, we've gotten the name of the trucks from Patrick, and, uh, so Lieutenant can kind of give you a little rundown more, he's been in contact with.
Okay.
Yeah, so the town of Hockington just called, and so I talked with their fire chief actually yesterday, I just got all this information yesterday, um, and from the first initial contact to when they got the truck, it'll close in a month, so they're getting these in about two a month in this variety, um, the way, the way they get it so fast is, it's just one spec, there's no customization of it at all, this is just how they come, um, and that's kind of, this is the only type of truck like that that would really work for that, cause it's just really designed to move water, it's not special for the apparatus or anything, um, so that's how they're able to do that, so.
So in other words, what you see is what you get.
Pretty much, yeah, and then.
And then you just put your name on the side of it.
Pretty much, yeah.
It looks like, like Lieutenant said, in a tanker, they're made to bring water, um, it's your fire engines that you wanna set up certain ways, um, so they accommodate the talent properly. This sets up so that it accommodates dropping water, everything, it can, you know, that's what this truck's like, if we needed to, we'll have some crossways, we could do an additional attack, a real quick additional attack with a fire truck out there, which, um, would be good, but it won't, this one won't come with ladders unless we would try to spec it that way, but then the other stuff we will get to.
But I thought that we, back a while ago, you had mentioned, maybe it was you, I think it was you, had mentioned that a lot of towns were going to these certain trucks that, um, I think you used Las Vegas for, that's all they had, used with these certain size trucks, that were combination ladder, and.
So you.
What, what do they, you helped me here.
So a small town like this, you're just talking about a coin.
They, that's the word, that's what I was talking about.
Back up a couple steps, my goal this year was to present that, was to get rid of two pieces of apparatus, one was gonna be engine three, and the other was gonna be our rescue.
Mm-hmm.
And combines now an engine with a ladder, I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm.
So the engine would end up having about five hundred gallons of water on its coach, so it could sustain itself till a tanker got there or another company got there or our next engine. It could make rescues if need be, um, and.
So this wasn't a quint, this was.
No, the one I was wanting to do.
Okay.
I had initially, last year, when I was officially given this.
Yeah.
Job.
Yeah.
I was like, this is really what I'd like to do for this town.
Mm-hmm.
I think that this town would, would benefit immensely from it. You've got, even just a building like this, but you've got two-story buildings out in, up in, you know, in the areas that this, a quint would have been perfect for.
Mm-hmm.
That was my goal, we could get two pe, get rid of two pieces of overhead and make one.
Now, yes.
And that would also be my rescue truck, in a sense.
Sure.
So unfortunately.
Yeah.
And improve our ISO.
Yes, and improve our ISO, because that's what changed when we lost, um, the last ladder. Unfortunately, with this truck breaking.
Mm-hmm.
This past year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it, it put a huge wrench in my plans.
Yeah, yeah, so now we've gotta do.
I was hoping to get some more time out of this truck. However, putting a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars into this truck, I think is not feasible, to give me maybe a couple more years.
And this truck, the original tanker we have is how old?
Twenty-five years old.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's a lifetime for a truck, really. So really, that truck with what we initially paid for it has given its money back to the town, in a sense. However, so a town like this though, with rural areas that don't have water, unfortunately, it needs, it needs water to get there. Um, and then, and we've been, I've got a couple of different towns right now dacking us up, so we do have the building fires that we've had, these towns are coming in automatically. We just had that Concord Street, luckily, the hybrid was.
Right there.
Not far from us, right there.
Yeah.
Um, we had another, we had a small barn fire, whatever, shed fire a couple of weeks ago, but we had tankers putting in for that because of exposures.
Yeah.
But, and even like, the Concord Street fire, a quint would've been perfect for that place. We'd have had a Laconia's ladder come in and said, is it, it worked out, we got the fire knocked down very fast, so that we didn't have to worry about the other apartments. But our ladder would've been there first, hybrid right there would've been perfect as well. With that being said, we do have to worry about water, so. So, I guess kind of where I'm going with this at this point is if this is something that we would like to pursue and, and I know that, and I kind of talked to you a little bit about this. To, to bring in a town boat early, I don't wanna have to have it for months away, and I followed this stuff through Patrick. And people further into it, and they're popping these out every couple of months. And basically, it says here, basically, you get this on a first pump, first certainly done setup on the email, I think I said, gave you guys email this too. For that, and you're, this would be a two thou, a three thousand gallon tank, and we're looking, we're just calling five hundred thousand dollars.
Is there additional upfit that you're gonna need to add to it, above the five hundred?
Um, yeah, potentially Lieutenant and I can talk about putting some ladders on it. Um, we should at least have an attic ladder, a roof ladder, and a twenty-four footer. Which we make it then, technically be considered an engine also if we need.
What about, um, radios and all the stuff inside?
The radios, we would take out of the tanker, we'll remount those into the new tanker.
How much?
Lighting is included in all this.
Yep.
Roxy lighting. Um, and we have a guy in the department that does our radio work for us, so he's just, that's a call department pay.
So how much do you anticipate in?
Well, and obviously, they're, they'll be painting, because they'll have to put, um.
So this does, all the decals, have I wrote that properly in there?
I believe it's some of the basic decal package.
And so I've got a guy that's been making our new stickers now for the doors.
Mm-hmm.
That's like sixty bucks for each door, or sixty dollars for a pair for the new door stickers. There, if you look down like my cruiser and stuff, that's what the door stickers are now. Um, and then a basic striping, which if you don't have to go crazy with striping, this truck isn't really gonna be sitting on a highway unless it's a road. Unless the building on fire on the highway or the, uh, 106. So it doesn't have to have as much of the, um.
Well, you probably need that more on side streets than you do on the highway now.
You know, so if we're, if we're burning a building on a highway, chances are 106 is gonna be closed down.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to worry about that.
Well, I mean, obviously, to have a special vote, we have to get, um, special permission to do a special vote, it has to be an emergency.
So I believe so, and I can look into, but now that she's found this option that they can essentially get in one month or two months, not six or seven months later, so at that point, you should just wait till March anyway. Now, if you want me to, I can look into if we are allowed to access this special residence capital reserve, which I don't think we can unless you call a special meeting. Um, I can look into if we're allowed to enter into a lease purchase agreement loan or whatnot. I know we don't have the money to cover it and buy it all now.
No, no.
Um, the only good thing with the, some of the lease purchase loans is I might enter it into twenty-four, but I don't have to pay until twenty-five, that's how a lot of my other loans have been happening for us lately. Um, so that would be a good thing. But as long as, if you want this to be the path, then I can look forward as to, um, the means to.
What's the balance in the fire and ambulance fund?
I think we're around six or seven hundred right now. But again, if my understanding is the other.
We've got obligations.
You need town votes.
Yeah, you still need town votes.
I understand that, but it's gonna be a lot easier to solve to the taxpayers, you tell them you're gonna take it out of the money they have in that fund or a portion thereof.
The, the.
You know, it's five hundred thousand, we wanna take out two hundred and fifty and pay it down and lease, do a lease purchase on the two fifty that we can afford.
Well, and again, not knowing what the, um, true figure is, because there's going to be a trade-in.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the truck is worth.
Right, so you're not saying five hundred thousand dollars and the trade-in would probably buy us the ladders and stuff that we need, or would.
Well, and then, then we have the other discussion that we had when we were talking about the fire was the cruisers. Um, because we're in need of two cruisers badly, um, you know, if we're gonna.
Well, they have an ambulance coming too, right?
Yeah, and that's already set, the ambulance should be in March.
Okay.
Right, and that's already figured into.
Yeah, so that's a hundred and six dollars, and then there's fifty thousand dollars right for the, um.
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand for the, uh, lease purchase of pump.
Yeah.
So, which I believe is, this is the twenty-five's of last year, so that'll be done then.
Is it?
And then the ambulance one is only for five years, um, and we already got one payment this year.
Right, okay.
Um, do you know if they do lease purchase or financing through this company or?
Uh, I believe through the Fire Apparatus Company, do they?
I would see what that is, a lease purchase, with a hundred thousand, you're gonna get increments from a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand in terms.
Right now, I just definitely wanted to get some numbers so that we would know what we're working with, um.
Well, you can work with the numbers all you want, but if you don't have the money, the numbers aren't enough.
But I needed a base, John, I needed a base to start with.
Well, and then the other question is.
I got, I got a pretty good idea.
Is that how does the board feel, does the board feel that we're gonna be able to get people out to vote? And, um, are we gonna be able to get people out to vote positively?
It's their choice to come and vote, we can call them election, they don't show up, the vote's the vote.
I know, I know, that's, it's just getting, getting the positive vote out.
That's the problem, you have to get.
But the sales, the sales pitch is we have monies to put down on this, and we're not, and right now, we're not giving a service that we should be, we're not able to due to a mechanical breakdown, so.
Yeah, I think selling to the fire department will be easier than selling to police department, 'cause that money's already set aside.
Sure, but I'm nervous about, I wanna make sure that we're not going in too deeply.
No, I get it.
Because there is.
Look, this, this wasn't my group.
Right, but I mean, we do have a limited amount of money in that fund no matter what, and we have, um, some of the budget comes out of that fund for the fire department. So we have the budget, we have the one ambulance, now two ambul, well, at some.
Well, the other ambulance is already paid for.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay, alright, so, alright, and then we have the, um.
The engine?
Engine, thank you.
Yeah, and I've pretty much stopped my head from going on that, uh.
Right. Right. 'Cause I know even when we were doing the budget, we were a little, um, you know, a little nervous about that.
Right now, you have two ninety committed to come out each year. In twenty-five, sixty thousand will drop off, and then in four more years, a hundred and six will drop off, but, and we're taking about six, seven hundred thousand a year.
But again, don't remember, don't forget, um, we have an, we have a ambulance, we're replacing an ambulance, and how old is the ambulance, the newer of the two?
Three or four years old?
Right, and if I remember.
It's nineteen, but it came when I started.
Right, but I, but I think, and you can help me here, life of an ambulance, I think we've been replaced, trying to get into.
Probably, I think it was a ten-year cycle that like started.
Are you sure it was ten? Alright.
Not necessarily the place we'll put it in the back, I thought is what it started.
Right.
That definitely gets more use in one.
Right, and that's what we talked about, was that the ambulance needs to be replaced more often because of the, the.
And what's eight, one year?
Um, that's like a twelve, so it'll be a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Which we've already, and that's already moving forward, so.
Yeah, okay, then we're gonna turn around, we're gonna get that one in, and probably the following year, we're gonna be looking at another ambulance. Working towards another ambulance, alright, alright. Well, and my feeling is, obviously, if we're going to go for a vote and try to sell that, that we include, um, cruisers. And when we lease, we lease purchase those, so.
I believe we'd have to ask, it's either the state or the DRA for approval, do you have that?
Yes.
And if it falls under emergency situations.
Right.
I haven't read the RSA or what the rules, the guidelines are as to what they consider emergency.
And I think there's a difference, 'cause we found the default, I think there is a separate RSA for account default.
Really, alright, alright, so I guess we need to do some homework, I mean, how does?
Yeah, I just don't wanna, I didn't wanna put the time and effort into it, 'cause I was like, no, we're just gonna put it on the ballot.
Right, if, if you're not.
So I have a question. So the ISO rating, ours went down with the engine problem.
With the ladder.
With the ladder, okay, so has it, or is it going to go down again because of the tanker?
It, I get what the numbers will be, but it will change, but right now, we're in a five-year cycle, so that's not gonna pick up for a couple more years.
Okay.
I'm trying to think what that should be.
So in a roundabout, so in a roundabout way, it hasn't gone up, it hasn't gone down, up?
It has, well, I have to get it going between those.
Right, but I'm, one of my. Yeah, whichever way, it hasn't deterred us because the eng, the tanker's out yet.
Because of the ladder.
Okay.
And the ladder was probably the most significant drop it had.
So, 'cause my question is, isn't the ISO number have something to do with our insurances on our homes?
Yeah.
So meaning if the ISO number drops, then our homeowner's insurance and everything else could tend to go up, so.
However, your.
But either way, we're gonna, either way, okay, if we've got another couple of years on it, either way, it's not gonna change because it's a cycle. So we're hoping that we'll have that engine.
Yeah, the cycle just won't change.
It won't change.
And then, and hopefully, maybe, depending, you know, in the near future, what happens with any complaint.
Yeah.
Which then, then adjust that issue, that, that.
Sure.
I feel.
Not looking at the ISO ratings at this point though, because.
Yeah.
Not looking at those numbers, which it does help if you have things, I'm looking at this more of the protection for the town.
Yeah.
And having any water for the outskirts of the town.
Well, yeah, I am too, um, but it's just another one of those things to add when you have to go, you know, if we, this could, you know, wanna know if this could directly impact it sooner rather than later. You know, so, I think that you should, or we should have you research during a special meeting too. We don't think that we should put this off if there, we have the ability to.
Do I have any objection? No objection to looking into a possible special meeting? Um, and again, a special meeting.
And or other financing.
Uh, yes, it makes you, obviously, look at those options, obviously, and then, um, Jen?
Yeah.
Obviously, if we have a special meeting, we've gotta have the school, we've gotta have the ballots, we've gotta have the voting box, or do we count by hand? No, we're gonna do the.
Uh, I would assume it would be, not by hand, we would need to have supervisors check us there.
Okay, yeah, and what are we talking expense-wise there, because that's above and beyond, what, I know.
Oh, of our elections, that weren't in the default budget?
Right, I know, I know.
Um, I.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, you know, alright.
It would only be voting on one matter, correct, so we have yet to know ballots, um, just.
And it would be, it'd have to be from seven in the morning to seven at night, you have to meet those same, yeah.
Yeah, we need the police.
You need help in there.
Yep, please.
Yeah, oh yeah, we gotta be there. Oh yeah.
Police needs to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Alright, we gotta, obviously, have to look into all of that, alright.
I get it, it looks, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't oppose that, that's for sure, um, I definitely, you know, I think we need to. Alright, okay, I guess we all have some homework to do, alright, we'll move forward and possibly, we can get this, um, a little better handle on it for a next meeting. And, um, you know, move, hopefully, hopefully move forward.
And I appreciate you guys listening.
Yeah, and Jen, can do a little homework on, yeah. Yeah, please, sorry, yeah, alright, awesome, and welcome, Ryan.
Thank you.
Alright, and thank you.
So, and just one more thing, we've got the chicken barbecue.
Oh, sorry.
We've got the chicken barbecue Saturday night, rain or shine.
Yes, alright.
Still have tickets available.
So I guess to segue off of Jen's comment about the barbecue.
Barbecue, yeah.
The item was Old Home Day.
Yeah.
Um, Danielle?
Please, 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 please.
Um, Danielle could not be here, uh, our first director is the, uh, chair of the Old Home Day committee, uh, she's at the field trip with the youngsters at summer camp. So she has, we have had a lot of meetings between, uh, yes, Monday and Tuesday, highly watching the weather that's going to happen Friday and Saturday, talking to the department heads. Danielle has reached out to the vendors, other towns, staff here, um, and it is Danielle's recommendation that we hold Old Home Day rain or shine on Saturday.
I think that's the committee's call.
We're not doing, we're not doing fireworks anyway, so rain or shine makes sense.
We're not doing fireworks anyway.
I mean.
If people wanna show up, they'll show up, those that can't make it, it's just, we don't have a rain date set in, you know, we don't plan for a rain date. So just to say, let's have it Sunday or another day is, is not feasible. There's a lot of other things that we considered on Sunday, but the permits have been unable to happen because there was no volunteers, there's no staff, um, for a place in fire as well on Sunday either. So best option, uh, she concluded was rain or shine.
That's what they have pop-ups for.
And the road race is rain or shine, because I talked to Greta last night, so.
Yeah, alright.
I have a question.
Yes.
Would, would it do an improved Old Home, Old Home Day, do we have a different road closure?
Nope.
I did, uh, what do you mean?
Well, usually, Mark, Mark says usually unless it goes the road, like, by eight o'clock or one?
No, no.
Yeah, we're after, basically after the last, the runner passes through.
Okay.
Oh, Mill Street, you mean?
Same thing.
But is it gonna be, is it gonna be open longer downtown? Or, 'cause we usually open the, you usually open the road back around one? Is that gonna be cut, is that gonna be?
I think the vendors have to be in place by eight, right? I think they have to be in place by eight and the vehicles, you know, stored away, so.
I'd say I know the play.
Usually it's about oh thirty-nineish that we actually block Main Street off, that gives.
Main Street or Mill Street?
Main Street.
Main Street.
We've got Main Street.
Oh, okay.
We leave Mill Street open on Mill Street South, so they can then park.
Okay.
If we block this one off.
Main Street here.
Got it.
The, right by, uh, Larue's house.
Yeah, yeah.
The sign goes up, that portion of Main Street's blocked.
Alright.
And then Fuller Street.
Alright.
I'll have Danielle.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Those you guys for our meeting, know that it's.
We're gonna open it up.
Now we know it's definitely gonna keep going on as planned, um, Danielle will show up, we keep them up for them. Um, and then at our last meeting, um, or we had discussions that, uh, we were gonna have a horse selection booth.
Yeah.
Um, so as long as you guys don't get too rained on, there will be a booth, um, for anyone who's listening and wants to attend, where the horse selection will be kinda in and out.
Yeah.
Um, people can come to the booth, speak to our wonderful selection, ask them questions about the town, ask them questions about whatever they want. Um, people can come to the booth, speak to our wonderful selectmen, ask them questions about the town, ask them questions about whatever they want. Um, staff is working to gather some pamphlets to hand out, that we thought was kind of important to highlight in terms of the assessments and values, and the budget versus the default, um, kind of, you know, what your stuff, what your budget includes, um, so we're working on those handouts, we'll have those.
So, is that a good time to, um, bring up the fact that we're, um, we're considering a special meeting in, say, in the fall, early fall? Um, because our need for, um.
That can get clarification, although you can say that or something.
Yeah, that would be.
Uh, we'll get you that for, hopefully.
That would be, that would be a good thing to, um, be able to.
Yeah, we're also gonna have, um, we do have a box at the town clerk's office where people can put their aim in and sign up for our newsletter, which we also do push out other notifications through the newsletter list, so we're gonna have a box like that.
Yep.
Um, and I probably had kind of thought of a, an idea of like a, a question, like asking the residents, and they can fill it out on paper, like, what do you wanna know about, what is important to you, and, um, you know, what, what, what message or what information can we relay to you, just so that we can get better feedback as well.
Alright, what time do we, what time does this booth open?
I will let Danielle let you know.
Eight, okay, alright, it's eight, awesome.
I don't know. I don't know anything about what, actually, just a moment.
Yes, Deb.
So, um, to play off that, we do have that command trailer, and we can bring it down, so if you wanna keep things dry inside if it is raining, it also has, it's like a camper, so it has the audio, um, if you guys wanna utilize that, I can bring that down, I can have the guys bring it down.
Huh?
Yeah, it's awesome.
That would be nice.
You'll want it.
Huh?
You'll want it.
So, that's for warm and dry conditions.
Yes.
It's gonna be a wet day.
Yeah, that might be, it's just to try to get it, you might have to check with Danielle to get it in place.
Yeah, so I'll, wherever she wants to have it.
Yeah, I don't even know where we're gonna be, at least we'll know where we're gonna be if we see the command trailer.
Right, so I can just have the guys bring it down, or just move it around.
Hmm.
Like, idea.
So then I don't need a pop-up tent? Uh.
The problem is you don't know which way this, this storm is tracking, you're either gonna get rain, or you're gonna get a lot of wind, and a pop-up's gonna end up putting you over.
Right, you don't need tables with, uh, kind of, for just chairs, so.
Yes, I asked my husband about that the other day.
Tents are trying to be anchored anyways, for any regulations.
Ah, regulations, regulations.
Oh, here we go, here we go.
The only reason they have regulations is to break them.
No fighting, alright, um, okay. That's all we need.
So, a message out there, rain or shine, Old Home Day, we're not.
Okay. Now, New Hampshire Humane Society Community Day participation.
Yes, if you recall, last year, we were approached by the New Hampshire Humane Society, they get a very large donation from Chewy dot com, and this is for all their, um, municipal partners that they work with, we do have a, um, partnership with them, and this is their second annual community day, what hap- what happened last year, what it is, um, Craig volunteered his time, and he took the truck up, and they literally have pallets and pallets of cat food, dog food, toys, uh, litter, anything pet-related. Um, he brought it back to town hall, and we had, um, at the timing then, and we had an event with National Night Out, and it's basically for those in the community that, you know, need that extra assistance, and it's, it's open to all, so, if you would like to have Belmont participate in that again this year, it would just require, um, us to go get the
Pallets, items.
items, we're not using the downstairs, so I assume we, I, you know, anticipate that we could put it down there, and we held a couple of events where, you know, we, we publicized it and advertised it, and people could come down and take what they wanted. And we also, um, gave a lot to, um, people that our general assistant director works with, and some of the churches took some too.
We gave some to the food pantries, yep.
Um, because they could divvy it up into smaller bags, but, um, some of the bags were like the big fifteen hundred.
Right, and actually, actually, the Saint Joseph's food pantry did divvy it up, and you could do that, some, sometimes you can't, but they allow, you can dog food, you can't people food, but you can dog food, and they did divvy it up, which, which was, um, very much appreciated, you don't think about when you're donating food that, you know, the dog or the cat, yeah, yeah. Um, I'll make a motion to approve participation in the second annual community day, hosted by the New Ham- New Hampshire Humane Society and Chewy dot com on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes.
And that August twenty-fourth is just for us to get it, and then we'll organize some events like we did last year.
And again, Craig, Craig, again, Craig, um.
Yeah.
I, I have a nice clean stock trailer if you need it, instead of the one ton.
Thank you.
Well, I, we took it one time, I took it one time last week, cause I thought we're gonna get two ballots, and they put two ballots on, and I was like, yeah, we could put two more.
Yep. Mm-hmm, well, I have a ni- I have a nice stock trailer, you're more than welcome to use it.
Yeah.
I mean, we went through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Obviously, did, and I started reaching out to a lot of.
Yeah, and it was pretty amazing, now. People that would come, they were so grateful and so thankful, and, you know, they all expressed they were in a, in a pinch, and that really helped them.
Well, the nice thing is if we could organize it well enough that it was picked up, you know, if we had a, um, if we advertised enough that it was, say it was picked up on Saturday, maybe that Sunday, um, why I think the stock trailer is you can just walk right in and grab it, you're not have them to climb up or whatever, if you wanted to, it's just a thought, but we can talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, all they have is a little fork, a little fork, but also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The one time worked really well, they put one in and then they pushed one.
Another one forward, alright.
Unless it's raining or something.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, if it ends up pouring, you might want it, alright, well, it's available if you need it. Um, Lake Region Public Access Renewal.
Yes, this is just, um, you guys motion, motioning and approving our yearly access agreement with Lake Region Public Access. Looks like it was up, and we need a motion to approve that, so that is our, um, meeting's live stream on Lake Region Public Access.
And is funded from cable fees.
Thought we were switching off that one, right?
Um, we may, I don't think that has any, I think if we.
It's separate, yeah, it's separate from the equipment, that was like an equipment.
Okay.
Thing that we have to change, a software equipment issue.
Yep, yep, does someone wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five multiple access agreement between the town of Belmont and Lake Region Public Access Television Services over the Breezeline Cable System, and the amount eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-eight cents to be funded by cable franchise fees.
Do I have a second?
I'll have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passed. Uh, vote in honor of a veteran, that's what this little thing is.
Yes, in front of you, you guys have a, a printout of a pin, but, um, I have received an email, um, from the Secretary of State, and of just, I provided you guys the information, if you guys wanna share it, but I already knew, um, what the program is, so. The Secr- the Secretary of State's office has pleased to launch its Vote in Honor of a Veteran program, which gives New Hampshire voters the opportunity to recognize the veterans and service members in their lives who protect our most precious freedom, the right to vote. To participate in the program, simply use the button below, you go to the website, to submit the name of the veteran and service member you are voting in honor of, and a short testimonial on what their service means to you. In exchange, the Secretary of State's office will make you a Vote in Honor of a Veteran lapel pin, designed by Navy veteran Jacob Aldridge, that you can wear proudly on Election Day. Um, it's, we've put this, um, in the newsletter with the link right directly to the website, and I think it's also on our, um, I mean, yes, it's in our newsletter for them to go to the Secretary of State's website, we also put it on our website, uh, and we just wanted to get the word out. Um, the pins are cubic, because I wanna show the little picture here, it's.
Yeah, little, a little picture of a pin, I wondered what that was, there you go, yeah.
It's pretty much actual size, too, I saw them yesterday.
Did you? It's got the old man of the mountain on it, which is great, yeah, yeah, very nice, nice, awesome, alright. Um, broadband initiatives.
This is another FYI to the residents, this email came in to me from, um, New Hampshire Economy, uh, again, I will touch base on what it is. This we also put in our newsletter, correct, for the residents, uh, so the New Hampshire Office of Broadband Initiatives within the New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs, the DA, is responsible for administering one hundred and ninety-six million dollars in federal funds through the National Telecommunications and Information Administration, um, called BEED. BEED funding will be used to improve broad, broadband infrastructure throughout the state, but before funding can be awarded to qualifying internet service providers, service location eligibility, eligibility must be approved. Um, so basically, residents, um, um, and essence on the map of the BEED funding will be based, must go through like a final review and determination process, which is referred to as a challenge process, during which municipalities and nonprofits can submit a challenge to a location or locations that are designated underserved. I didn't realize this is also for us, so I think what we could do is if we find areas in town that are, and this is, um, this is just, um, broadband, that's just, that's just, uh, yeah, so if we're finding areas that we are finding underserved and not working, we can also submit.
So, in other words, in other words, if I couldn't get internet service, well, I do, I get it, but you get it through cable, and they're running wires everywhere.
Uh, there may be some areas, we may be well-covered in Belmont, I know there's some areas where if you maybe have new developments or, or areas that are kind of out in the outskirts that haven't been done enough.
What happens, like, what happens when there's a new development in town, Karen? Say somebody puts in a big development, does, does the internet just automatically show up and put their wires up?
It becomes part of the utilities plan to respond with, or it's just like.
When they, when they do it initially, alright, oh, yeah, cause a lot of those places, they do it underground, alright.
So, this would just basically allow people to go in and say whether they're designated as served, underserved, or unserved based on the availability of high-speed broadband service, and if they agree with the current designation. So, the public can participate in this process from July fifteenth to August fourteenth, um, and it is, the process is required by state and federal governments.
I, I have no idea what this means, I'm sorry, I, I must be drawing the blame, what does this mean?
It means that residents can basically go online and say whether they agree or disagree that the locations that the city has designated, you can agree that they're served, I mean, yes, they get internet, underserved or unserved, based on the availability of high-speed broadband service.
And then they'll use that sixteen million they drive.
I was just gonna say, so, no, no, it's a hundred and ninety-six million dollars, no, it's a hundred and ninety-six million five hundred.
You have to go online to.
It's just another zero at this point.
Okay.
And then, um, if eligible, a broadband network deployer might receive funding for a portion of the cost of delivering broadband service to that location.
Okay. Does anybody not have internet service here? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, um, the Penn Stock Park Maintenance, Patrick, that's the pipe.
Uh, that would shoot.
No, oh, oh, the pictures, oh, yeah, we got a dead tree, few dead trees.
No, that's a green bush. Yeah, I got pictures.
At Penn Stock, right, just beyond the, uh, beginning of the tree line, we have, uh, five or six, seven asteries that are dead.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, very tall, uh, if they were further back, I really wouldn't be concerned about them, but if they do come this way, they'll come right into the road area. Well, I guess my question is, I'm not sure, we maintain the grass and take care of it, but I'm not sure whose liability is it, I mean.
Well, if they fall, they're probably gonna take the, um, Eversource and all the cable lines right down with them by the looks of it. If I'm looking at the picture, I, yeah. I can actually speak to this.
Across the street.
Oh, I think.
But they could come right into the road, so.
Yeah.
Um.
The road is, the road is a state, the road is a state, road is a state.
Greg, you know, how is the good service to the street at all?
Yeah, technically that.
I think somebody needs to contact the state, cause I believe that's a state road, Main Street.
I think that's our property, though.
It's our property.
I think the land is ours.
Do we own behind the fence too, and into that wood line?
Karen, do we own behind the fence?
She's like, yes.
So, just so everybody knows, trees like that belong to the property.
Oh, alright, I was trying to ponder that on somebody else.
So, that's how the state, on state road, that's how the, and, and basically, our, us too, our tree program, we've taken a lot of, we've taken a lot of trees that people have asked to take, and, and, you know, they're dangerous trees and stuff like that, they technically are the property owners' trees, so we really don't have any liability in it.
So, when is our tree company coming in to do?
They're not coming this year.
They're not coming this year because we, the budget.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to save a little money, and, to be honest with you, when I, when I first started, you know, we, we were using a tree service, and they were charging us seven hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Mm-hmm.
For two guys, the truck, the ladder, everything, so now, that's almost up to two thousand dollars a day.
Yeah, okay, so Patrick, what are you proposing, Patrick?
And in the. Well, proposing, first of all, I, I need to know which committee or which organization is actually responsible for that, I mean, is it Buildings and Grounds, or is it the Heritage, or?
I'm glad, I'm glad you've taken ownership of it.
Oh, I guess.
Open mouth.
I, I know the Heritage Committee does a lot of work in there, and they come down.
Well, you can be on our committee too.
Yeah, sure. My, my recommendation, I guess, would be to call Jacob Caldwell, that treats us well, and get a price from him to see, I think some of these are gonna require Crane to come in, um, to take down piece, piece by piece, um, and see what he would charge us.
Great idea.
Do you want me to confirm with the Heritage Committee that they're okay with you doing this, or you good with it? I think they're gonna be totally okay with it.
What do you mean, they're gonna be happy?
Have fun, take them all down.
Sharon, you have a comment?
So, as cemetery trustee, we've dealt with this a couple of times, the very first thing is you look at the tree, if you think it's in danger, you call Eversource, Eversource will look at the tree, and if it's going to come down and peek down the power lines and stuff.
They're not, they're not there.
Power lines.
Then I would call Jacob because he's.
They're across, but fortunately, they're across the power lines, they're right there at the park and go across the street.
Cause we've done it two or three times, Eversource has taken down one, we've paid to take down the other two, so.
I'll call, I'll call Jacob and get a price and present it at the next meeting, I mean, we've not had any things come down yet, but you never know.
Who knows this weekend?
Maybe, maybe handle this.
We might not have to have this conversation.
I'll be paying for it this weekend, no matter what.
Yeah, really, really, alright, alright, thank you.
Thanks for.
We're getting kind of harassing, aren't we, okay, um, we did the Old Home Day update, oh, yeah, trustees of the trust funds.
Yes, yesterday, I received a visit, nation, um, Thomas Gulet, that he is, um, retract, um.
Resigning.
As the trustee of the trust fund, because he is relocating to Latonia in August. Their suggestion right now is that they have some, the rest of the commi- uh, trustees have some, um, people that they are reaching out to, they feel have qualifications and a background in this, if that pans out not to come to fruition, or they're not interested, my suggestion to them was, um, to do like we do with the budget committee, when, when we have an opening, is to advertise, you know, that we have an opening.
Yeah.
Um, town's term ends March of twenty-five anyway, so whoever the board appointed in the interim would serve from essentially September till March, or until before that.
Sure, alright, okay.
Just, I'll run with that.
FYI, milfoil treatment areas.
Yes, as in a butter to, um, Silver Lake, the town received a, uh, a butter notice, which everyone in the, affects the area as well, so I just wanted to.
I believe that's already taken place, right, haven't they already?
August thirteenth, it says.
Okay.
So, just to put it on record, that they are doing, um, milfoil treatment around, um.
August thirteenth?
Wintersquam, right, Wintersquam Lake.
Oh.
Uh, it'll take place on Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the notice, they have said that there's a the following temporary water use restriction will be imposed on the day of treatment, no swimming for six hours after treatment, within two hundred feet of the treated area, there's no drinking, or domestic use restrictions, turf established.
So, is this Wintersquam?
So, this says, Lake Wintersquam.
Yeah, okay, I'm not Silver Lake, okay, alright.
To chemically treat portions of Wintersquam Lake in Marathon, Hilton, from milfoil.
Yeah.
But it ends up in Silver Lake anyway.
Well, I know it does, but, but I thought someone had told me that they had already done some, uh, maybe diving or something, I don't remember, it doesn't, yeah.
They do a combination.
Is that what it, yeah.
They do a chemical.
Yeah, yeah, I believe they get grant money, um, for that too, some of that, okay. Twenty twenty-four assessment impact notices.
Yes, what everyone in town is waiting for, so we have, uh, in front of you just the draft, um, it did change, a few dates changed this morning, so we don't have a cleaner version for you, but the, um, impact notices, uh, will be mailed today and tomorrow from KRT. That is the ones where they say, this is your old assessment for twenty-three, and this is your new assessment for twenty-four. The time to call KRT, not to town of Belmont, is between August twelfth and August twentieth, to set up those hearings, if you so feel that you need to, um, have questions or contest your new assessment. So, those will be hitting the mailboxes probably by this weekend, if not Monday.
And these assessments are all pretty much based on what homes are selling for?
Correct.
Not what we have anything to do with, basically, okay. Um, twenty twenty-four budget update.
Yes, for your July updates, we should be on target. Yes, for your July updates, we should be on target of fifty-eight percent of the budget and we are at fifty-five percent. So it's still trending.
Thank you, department heads. Uh, August twenty-first meeting of the CDBG public hearing.
Oh, no, now we're into new business, oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, I'm in old business. Sorry, we, we, I got two pieces of paper going here. Now you got me confused, alright. So let's start with the CEO update on fifteen Johnson Street, yay.
We are gonna put that in the lean box.
Yay.
Huge one.
Huge one.
Huge. The pictures that I saw are awesome.
I only printed one set, so you'll have to share.
I don't, I've seen.
But you can try to get an idea of what it looks like. Um, there's one pile that's out there, the asset management company went out and in two days pulled out camper, the cars, the junk, they even mowed, which was, we, we gave them a gold star because the, I guess the white face artists were, um, rather angry in the field, but they did pull out vehicles, they pulled out the junk, there is one pile, um, of basically untreated lumber that, if you're looking at the garage, it's kind of tucked around the back, that they have notified us that when they clean out the inside, they're.
Yeah, it's evidently a different company that's gonna do the inside versus the company that did the outside, yes.
But, yeah, so they were in there, it looks.
Yeah, I did hear from one of the abutters that has, for the last seven years, has kept me up to date and, um, is very, was very appreciative.
When we were out there doing the inspection, there was a gentleman outside looking and kind of, you know, watching what was going on, but yeah, it was from just a couple of weeks prior when we had done an update to the day we were out.
Now, I noticed on the roof, cause there was a hole in the roof, right, because that was one of the fires that a homeless person, and it almost looks like there was some staging on the roof.
It's, it's like a, it's more like furring and just some plastic.
Okay, so nobody's up there fixing it, okay, alright, I wasn't sure about that, I said, oh my god, there is, yeah, okay, so that was just.
It's just kind of before, I mean, it's.
It'll, it'll be, it'll be ready for some homeless by the end of October.
It's got ambiance now, it's got ambiance.
It will be, it will be, you'll be up there, Mark, oh no.
Is that what you mean?
We'll go up to have chase it them out.
It would just be so nice if someone purchased it, but I don't know if they could save the place or there's enough money to save the place.
With enough money, you can do just a bit of.
I know, I know, but it was, in its day, it was a.
It needs a little lipstick.
It, oh yeah, Band-Aid isn't gonna do this, no, that's for sure.
It, it was, it was, but it, just cleaning it up may, in a matter of two weeks.
It actually looks like a house.
Yeah, over here it does, yeah.
Yeah, just don't look too close, so don't look at all the pictures, just look at the, look at the pretty ones.
And they had mowed the lawn already and moved all this up out of the driveway.
Looking at it right now.
Awesome.
So with that, there are any compliance, they're off the, you know, they're off our radar, we've informed legal that they are not in compliance and, you know, we can't just spend any more money legally.
Yep.
And we just pray that they flip in and sell it.
Yes.
Well, the neighbor, actually the neighbor went over, evidently called and offered a certain amount of money, but they refused it, so, you know, we'll see, but it's a bank.
But it's bank owns it, which they own, still owns it, so they all.
So the bank will pay the property taxes, they will keep all that stuff up and.
Well, they were paying the property taxes, but for some reason they weren't paying the water.
What is the amount of that?
Oh, yeah, maybe maybe dollars.
So we're in tax month, they wanna get that cleaned up and paid.
Of course, awesome, okay, good, um. Okay, now, August twenty-first.
Uh, I have Saturday night.
No, no, go, go ahead.
So on the heels of the code enforcement update, um, I don't have one hundred percent confirmation because the realtor won't not return any of my ten calls that I've left her and the seller, or will not return any of my calls or emails or letters. Um, but the title company for seven fifty-two Laconia Road has reached out to get final figures. I, from our gathering that she's reaching out, um, it looks like they, and she did confirm that they are under active contract and it does look like seven fifty-two will close on eight sixteen. They are contacting the town for all those final liens and payouts that, that property is due to us.
But it's still not in compl, is it?
It wasn't in compliance, according to our hospital enforcement officer.
Okay.
Well, we, the one issue that's always come up is that living space above the garage.
Right.
And the one thing we did to, to cover our bases and to cover ourselves, is a letter was sent to the current owner stating that, you know, we are aware of this, that it exists, it is not in compliance, and selling the property does not abate the violation. So whoever buys it buys the violation and it, it retains that status.
Okay, alright, so we just have to obviously kind of keep, well, we'll know it happened because it will be, we'll receive the back monies, okay? Alright, okay.
And now you can go to the house.
Now I can go to the August twenty-first meeting for the CDBG public hearing purpose of three P M or later.
Yes, so I was contacted by CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant. They have been providing the funding for the Save the Gale School. So the Boys and Girls Club are a tenant that is going into that proposed building and they want to take out another, um, CDBG loan to buy, um, playground equipment. So they need to hold a public hearing with the town for that.
How can they hold, how, how can they buy playground equipment, they can't even use the building?
That'll be my question, right?
I mean, great questions you can ask at the public hearing, um, but their request is they, their rule says, are that they have to have public hearings after three P M. So your next meeting of August twenty-first.
The horse and the cat.
Would you like to have your meeting at three P M, four P M, five P M, six P M?
Oh, we have to hold a public hea, oh.
Because we're the passer for the loan, just as we are the passer through the loan for the Save the Gale School for the five hundred thousand that they originally took out, so. They can't take it out on their own, it has to be co-throughed municipality.
Are we, are we liable for this money? Or is it just a grant?
No, it's just a pastor.
There's no money.
They were just a pastor, so when they expense from it, we technically hold the money, we write the checks and it's not our money.
So can.
Cause I was just picturing like.
You know what I'm thinking?
When the county, we give money to the gun stock back in the day, and we were on the hook for the loan, like, we would take a loan out of four gun stocks.
No, we're not, no, it's a loan.
No, but I guess my other question is, what if we say, well, we'd like to see the building, um, we'd like to see something happen to that building? Because right off the bat.
I was in the paper about a month and a half ago that they were applying, the lady that's been before us, they were applying for.
I was gonna say, just as, they do have an active building permit, we have done a whole plan review and they have been, that's us, I believe you're talking about, uh, Sal over at, uh, Lakes.
Community Developers.
Yeah, Community Developers, but they, they have filed for their permits, they are fully permitted and good to go, I just.
I believe it was supposed to go out to bid, late at the end of July, the first of August.
But we have a whole plan set, so.
And, and that plan, it, on that acre of land involves enough parking that they're gonna, and enough playground area?
I, I don't recall the playground area, but I would have to look at the site plan, it's been a, been a hot minute.
Okay.
It, it has to be based on the availability of funds, so they must have come in contact with something that would support the playground equipment or whatever they're doing. And so if they don't take it, take advantage of that now, they may not get it moving forward, so it does look like the copy for the horse.
It does, thank you, I was just gonna say that.
This is pretty common practice, as they're going to build their, whatever their plan is.
Whatever they're gonna do.
They also come in contact with other grant opportunities or CPG funding.
So even though they apply for this grant, it doesn't mean they're gonna get it. And even though they apply for this grant, doesn't mean that they'll even, um, buy the playground equipment because they might not have a place to put the playground equipment if another grant falls through.
There's some provisions with that though, like if they're awarded it, then whether they have sixty days, ninety days, six months to acquire or whatever. But I know this is just like us, you know, we go and reach out for these grants or whatever, and.
It just seems like everything's been extended, 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 extended.
Yeah, they did extend, we did vote.
Yeah, I remember we voted.
Extension of that grant, um, for the five hundred that they have on, and then this is.
And all, and, and, and I just, everybody asked me, what are they gonna do with that building, what are they gonna, you know, they keep asking me, us, what they're gonna do, but, you know.
So what was that lady's name, it was Carmen, right?
Carmen, right, she's on that.
So, she had said.
To talk about if this was really.
Gonna happen.
So Carmen had said at the meeting, as soon as they sold all the tax credits, they would put it out to bid. And the website is saying that all the tax credits have been sold, so it should be hitting the papers for bidding.
So what you're telling us is we need to, um, make a time on August twenty-first to have a, um, an evening meeting?
What day of the week is that?
Yes, instead of the day.
A normal.
We're gonna move our normal meeting, you're saying, to the other day, to the morning?
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly, your normal meeting, instead of ten o'clock, it would have to be three, four, five, six, whatever is convenient for you, they just said it has to be after three.
Okay.
Or three or after.
I don't have a problem with that, what would, what time, draw straws, what time would you like your afternoon meeting?
My boss would be happy that's at three, so he won't care.
Okay.
Really, we're fine.
I can't do, it would have to be after four for me.
At least let me get out a little bit early for work, come on.
Three.
Sorry. Well, on your way home from work, grab Anthony off the bus for me.
So do you wanna do four for, you said four or three?
Four.
Four for her and.
I have four works for everybody, it's fine with me.
Just four.
And my boss would be too happy with that, so yeah.
Just four.
He will be.
He would be way too happy.
She'll be four, yeah, it'll be alright, yeah.
I had a cold day at work.
Let's do four, let's do four o'clock on August twenty-first, and then that will, um, that will satisfy their public hearing, um.
Correct, I was thinking September, no.
No, it's August.
Oh yeah.
So three o'clock is good, I can do three o'clock.
Okay.
Hey, get out of work a little early, we're thinking.
Okay, so we're gonna do three o'clock on August twenty-first, three o'clock. On August twenty-first. Okay, um, anybody have anything, um?
Mark.
Mark, thank you, Zim, Mr. Zimmerman, I was trying to think of the last name, so, Mr. Zimmerman, Mark, how are you?
Sorry, I'm, I'm. So, um, for those of you who don't know, I'm on the budget committee. Uh, at the last meeting, uh, with.
The budget and the selectmen's meeting, yes.
July, uh, was, uh, came away trying to grapple with, uh, the increasing costs of the town and how we deal with them without tax increases. Obviously, this is an ongoing discussion and concern. You know, we've talked about, uh, in the budget committee, uh, and, and here, about maybe the necessity at some point about across the board, budget cuts for each department, and may come into play at some point depending on how things go. And, you know, we also talked in budget committee about, uh, possibly redoubling our efforts to, uh, shop service providers, particularly fuel and health insurance. And those are gonna be ongoing, I think. But ultimately, you know, on the short term and long term, I'm trying to think about, uh, what could the town do, uh, you know? And, and I came up with a couple of ideas for exploration, one on short term, one on long term. Looking at alternative use of town assets. It, it, it came to my mind that, you know, there was some way we could generate more revenue, uh, than burdening the taxpayers, that might be something to look at. So, uh, the first thing I thought of, uh, on a relative short-term basis, was, uh, looking at the bank building. Patrick was kind enough to give me a, a tour, uh, as I opened it. And, um, I, I was asking him about, you know, okay, so mostly it's used for storage, sort of appears. And I was asking about, uh, how much room is there in this building? And he said, well, there's, you know, some, some room for storage. And it occurred to me after, uh, thinking about that and the bank building itself, uh, I'm wondering if we could explore possibly selling the bank building. And it would have to be a tear down if we would want it, because to recondition that building would be, I think, prohibitive. Selling the bank building with, with the idea, and of course, I have no idea what the values are or what they would be. The fact is, it's, it's crossing town halls, so there'd be plenty of traffic for any potential buyer who might be thinking on a commercial basis. You know, whatever sort of revenue we generate from that sale, um, i- i- and, and, you know, at the top of my list would be to allocate whatever funds came about as a result of the sale towards police and fire protection. Now, obviously, that would be up to, you know, you folks, but I, I'm just thinking about the capital expenditures that are upcoming that we've got faced and they're significant, and obviously there are others, you know, with the, with the water line, et cetera. But my thought was that, you know, after a survey, uh, and taking inventory of what is in that bank building and how much room there is here in this building, as well as, and I don't know, uh, if there's any room at all, but on Public Works Building, that we could use the storage from over there and bring it over here and up, up to the DPW only after sale of that building and possibly put it towards, uh, capital expenditures for, for police and fire vehicles. Now, at the same time, uh, it would generate some revenue if it was a commercial enterprise that went in there and built something. So we sort of killed two birds with one stone. That's one concept that came up, and another one, which is more along, along the long-term, long-term thinking, and this is, this is definitely a, it's a long shot, that's for sure, but, uh, from what I've seen, uh, with other municipalities around New England, a lot of them are embarking upon, uh, waste-to-energy solutions. Uh, taking into account, you know, people have to go to dump to get rid of stuff, sewage, sludge, et cetera, they're gonna be dealing with this. So my thought was, well, it might be worth exploring with Casella, a public-private partnership to do a waste-to-energy facility. And obviously, uh, after looking at the map, Casella land itself doesn't have much room there for any expansion. But from the looks of it, uh, the Department of Public Works has plenty of acreage up there. Not thinking about the area where it's swarming, I'm talking about on the west side, north west side. And you can, again, kill two birds with one stone, that is to say, you know, to deal with, uh, sludge and waste depending on the capabilities of these facilities, as well as, and this is the, 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 uh, revenue generating thought, might be able to attract, uh, some towns surrounding us to say, look, you know, if you're environmentally conscious, why not use our facility? And fees that are generated from that, as well as the power that's generated as output from a facility of that sort, could be beneficial to revenue tax base here. So they're just a couple of ideas, trying to think out of the box, y'all have a memo on, on the bank building part, and I'd be willing to look at the other part if, uh, it was, uh, worth exploration, uh, you know, after your determination.
How would you propose to get rid of this sludge that you're talking about?
In this waste facility, waste-to-energy facility, they burn it.
You do realize that the waste facility that was very active down in Pennecook for twenty-five years was closed by the United States government?
Well, that, yes, indeed.
And, and it was closed after they met the EPA requirements for the air scrubbers on the exhaust stacks.
When was that?
About five years before they closed it, and they still closed it.
Okay.
And they generated electricity with that, and the same with our electric bills that are taking a tremendous hike. We burn coal down in Bow for public service. They put air scrubbers and water air scrubbers and all this stuff, millions and millions of dollars per the EPA, and they just, they're not burning coal anymore, and they're passing the cu, the cost on us, what, seventeen percent this year and twenty-eight percent next year?
Here, here?
In town.
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
Um, well, the, the only thing I would say to that, and, and I, I don't just believe you, except that they are, the EPA is, uh, permitting new facilities, for example, in Maine, I know that, that there's made, there's one definitely, maybe two, that are going to be built. And so I would think under, particularly this municipal scripter standards, that they wouldn't do that unless they felt like these permits were going to be good for the long term.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a political analyst, but I know this lady that's advertising to be the governor, this Wilmington lady out there, the first thing she's saying, stop the trash from coming into Hampshire.
Okay, where are you gonna put it?
Well, they're putting it up north, they're pretty, they got that pretty well screwed up now.
That's the issue, that's the push, is she's trying to get the up north voters, cause it's been in the State House for four years now, they're trying to shut down a, a trash city up there.
Right.
They, they fill the valley that's big enough to go from here to Franklin.
Well.
And I think our trash currently goes to another state from Casella.
A lot of it goes, a lot of it goes up here, 'cause the trailers go up and down ninety-three. But they, they load it here and then take it, but they take it somewhere.
And I guess my, my question's going to be, obviously, I believe that that land up there is on our aquifer, pretty active aquifer with the, with the swamp.
Okay, but on the north west side, that's away from the swamp.
Yeah, but I think the area that he's talking about is the land of the old dump.
No, no, no. Well, we can't touch that anyways, because that's under federal.
You're talking about the grassy area in the fence?
No, he touched.
Yeah, well, all, all I know is that I looked at the swamp areas, oh.
Yeah, there's some swamp up there.
There's this whole other acreage that I don't know what's being, I don't know if this, what it's-
Is it fenced in?
The guy that we know just left a little while ago.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah. No, I don't think we can touch the dump anyways.
No, we can't, that's why I said it.
No, no.
That whole area behind DPW is considered a dump.
No, no, before you get to DPW, on the right-hand side was where the old dump was.
That's in there.
Yeah.
'Cause if you look down the east side, I'll be around there.
On the east side?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, but, but therefore, I guess the question would be, uh, you know, going north and west, how much acreage is there that could be used, you think?
Well, and that, okay, so, so what comes into mind is when you're talking about that, so now, um, the increase in the truck traffic to deliver sludge, I guess, from other towns or whatever, um, I'm sure you're gonna need a three-phase, which, um, that road is not three-phase.
We'd have to do some road engineering.
Right, oh, yeah. It, it, and we just redid that road, what?
Two years.
Two years ago.
Well, but this would be part of the discussions with Casella, since they have relatively deeper pockets than we do.
But in the smaller scheme of things, the bank building, I've never been opposed to getting rid of, selling the bank building.
Well, first-
I've never been opposed to selling some of the bank building.
Well, but have, have there been, have there been any efforts to do so?
We paid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that, if I remember correctly.
For the building yourself?
Yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand.
The thing that I did though, and it's clearer than I remember, I said, I have no idea, you know, what that part would be worth on the open market, I mean.
Well, I think that, I think, at least it was my feeling, was it was always, in my mind, going to be torn down and become green space where we were looking at the mill and looking at opening the green space to be able to use the gazebo more maybe for outside, um, concerts, you know, local. And again, the bank is at the bank. The library is looking at an expansion, which is going to come this way. And so, you add an addition onto the library, which they're working on that right now, um, they're in negotiations with Architect. You add an addition onto that library, um, yeah, it's gonna be pretty tight.
Aren't those separate parcels already?
Well, they, uh, well, yes, no, because we took out, because we, we, remember, there was a road there. So there's been some different things done to that property where the gazebo is, 'cause there was a road.
Between the library and the bank?
Right, right. So I think pretty much the town owns-
It's a post office.
Right, right. Right, it's pretty small where, what the bank is on. And is it gonna be enough parking? If it's a, what did you say, a three-quarter acre lot?
Yeah.
Is whatever, commercial or whatever, how much parking is assigned to that?
Well, there's in the back that's parking. But, look, I mean, these are, these are ideas for exploration. And forgive me, I'm looking at this from a budget perspective, 'cause that's really what I'm doing.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Whatever it would be, if there was a commercial entity that wanted to say, okay, we'll buy this for a tear down and put in whatever, it's gotta be aesthetically pleasing to the town.
Well, uh-uh, but the problem is, you sell it aesthetically pleasing, it could become an apartment house. It could become a, um, as we have all said.
Well, the zoning, the zoning committee would have a final say on, on how it looks, I would assume.
No.
Zoning doesn't?
No.
There's no architect, uh, regulations at all.
There's no, nope. It could become a whatever.
If it fits in the zoning requirements, it's allowed to be there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we are here, we are having a zoning committee.
Well, you know, no, no offense, Mr. Zimmerman, but if you really looked at your tax bill, really read it, the town's portion of your tax bill was not the problem.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not complaining about it.
No, 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 no.
No, but, but it's good to-
The school went up four million dollars this past year and we don't, and, and we don't get any say in all.
Well, that's, you know, and I-
But yeah, but yeah, okay, here, here we go, all right? The town portion of that tax bill did not pass, all right? So we have a fire department that needs help.
Yeah.
We have a police department that needs help.
Yes.
Right now, I think highways, pretty, we won't, we won't pick on the highway for this portion. And God forbid, if someone needs a fire truck or a fireman or a police officer, this just all got jeopardized with this, as far as I'm concerned, with this budget not passing, I understand. But yet, people won't go to a school meeting, people won't show up, they go in and vote yes for the school, which I understand.
The children are our future.
The children are our future, but if we don't have police and fire to protect those children, we're not gonna have those children for our future.
Which is exactly the emphasis behind what I'm trying to think about here, you know, trying to get some ideas going.
Yeah, it's brutal, it's-
And that's why I, I brought this up in budget committee, I know it was shot down, I still think that we should get attorneys to get together and say, look, there's gonna be some way to bring the school budget under the budget committee in the select.
And who's gonna pay for those attorneys? See, that, and that, and that is the problem, if-
Right, are the voters?
No, they're a whole separate government entity, there's nothing we can do.
There's nothing we can do.
Their entire separate government entity.
But this is where, this is where, in my view, and again, I, you know.
Until the state of New Hampshire.
That's why we're gonna have attorneys to go to the state.
Until the state of New Hampshire.
Look at, look at the laws and find some way to, to adjust the law, because this is, this is insanity.
Every time.
They're having a great time over there, it's, okay, we've done all this, you pay it.
And now, and now, not for nothing, but this lawsuit with the, um, YDC, the, um, I mean-
Sununu Center.
Yeah, with the Sununu Center, this lawsuit.
The YDC, that was the youth to go.
I am no, where is the state of New Hampshire gonna come up with?
Uh, we, I don't, we settled on it, I don't remember what it was, it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money that the state of New Hampshire is going to have to pay. I mean, and I'm not, I'm not, I understand why, because of the abuse and what took place at YDC, we're all gonna have to pay for that. And plus try to keep our tax bills low, but keep our children properly educated, keep our fire and police departments, yeah, it's, it's-
All, all the more reason why, I think, at least from my perspective, I'm, I'm-
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, I know.
We can't have, we can't have a hole in the dike and expect it not to be flooded, okay? And the schools are doing that to us.
But to clarify, that's when it comes down to the citizens not being involved enough still. They're the ones that should be more involved, looking at the budget, looking at who actually puts the budget together, which is the school, not us, and voting their way. I mean, local control is where it's gonna stay.
And they're top heavy.
You're never gonna change the local control in New Hampshire.
I'm sorry.
They're top heavy. It's not the teachers that are getting the money.
Understood, it's administration, it always is, it always is. But, but yeah, I keep coming back around to this. This is why we're gonna get attorneys involved and, and, and look at the state resolution.
You should run for legislator. You should run for senator. Run for governor.
We had a meeting probably five, five, five years ago with the governor. He was here to endorse the medic, one of these medical institutions over on Route Three.
Oh, yeah, that, the one I had to go down, yeah.
And we, the governor came, and I know him personally, I know his father personally. And he said to me, he said, John, what do you think? I said, I think it's time to give the people that have a boat the same opportunity as a car. When you buy a car, you come to town hall and you pay a town tax to register. And on a new car or a new pickup you're buying, you're spending seventy-five grand for a decent pickup, it's quite a hefty bill.
Every year.
But you can buy a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar boat and register it for twenty-four-fifty.
We tried that.
I mean, twenty-four thousand fifty cents.
We tried that last year and the boat lobby came out.
The boat lobby is something wicked, 'cause it, the, sixty percent of the boats that most of these big mariners sell, these big boats, are registered in New Hampshire and don't sit in the water in New Hampshire. They sell them out of state and that's part of the sales contract.
And the key here, again, controlling the costs you can control and, I mean, really putting the hammer down on those who are just handing you a bill and say, thanks very much, babe, for this, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're pretty, I feel that the select board has been, in this town, has been very frugal, all right?
Agreed, absolutely.
And you know something? When you saw on Facebook when the budget didn't pass and you saw people saying, well, the selectmen are hoarding money.
Yeah.
And we're doing this and that, you know, and, but they don't come to any meeting. And, again, I'll bring this up again. People say, well, because we hold our meetings in the morning. I had a conversation last week with a gentleman that said, well, you know, you hold your meetings in the morning, I work. And I said, okay, so if we change them tonight, will you come? Because we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and nobody came. No, I probably wouldn't come because I'm exhausted at night. What do you think we are, okay? And our, our department has to have to come to these meetings. No matter what we do, we get damned in a heap. And, you know, we are frugal and we're trying, again, desperately, we got a police department, we got a fire department, that's in trouble. This town is in trouble.
They need to take care of first and foremost, so they can take care of the rest of us.
Right.
There isn't a town around buying their propane that we, anything we have now is propane, and I have a consortium that I control and have for many years. We're buying propane cheaper than most towns, they're paying twice what we are. And we got a national firm that backs us up. And that's-
So, we go out and, we go out, you know, we spend a lot of time trying to keep our, and, and we put a lot of pressure on our department heads to keep monies down and, yeah, and here we are. Totally agree. I wish there was a way. Yes, Alicia?
I don't know when this occurred, but just to point to kind of another fact of the bank, we did do a feasibility study on all of our buildings that we had.
Yeah, that's right.
And I think it was the voters who voted to still keep the building, because A, we had purchased the bank building for a future use of a building that we may need in the future.
Okay, we need-
And then when we rebuilt the, when we needed to rebuild the police department, I think we also did another survey analysis of, okay, do we tear it down? Do we go into the bank buildings, that was an option on the table, or do we purchase another building that's for sale up on one oh six? And the voters decided to keep that for something else and we just rebuilt the police station there. So we have-
Well, the feasibility study basically said that the bank building wasn't really good for much.
Right, it's a tear down.
Because, it's a tear down, all right? And I think that the voters felt that when we, when the voters chose to keep the mill, to restore the mill for it to become town hall, which the voters voted for that, all right, that they felt by having green space, it just enhances our town building, all right? If, if it's a tear down and somebody puts up a three-story apartment house, all right? I don't know where they're all gonna park if they did that, because it'd take a bigger footprint, whatever. I mean, I think that that's kind of what's been, uh-
Made up.
Yeah. And now we're just, everything's being voted down because people are strapped for taxes.
So, let me ask you this. Let's suppose it explored, see if there was anybody who'd be interested in buying that piece of property, specifically for, for, uh, a project that we agreed to in advance, okay? Now, I'm not saying that we can do it, but we'd say, okay, one of the conditions, this is, you know, we have to put forward is, it's gotta be approved by the voters that X is gonna come in here. If we don't want an apartment building downtown, okay? Whatever, whatever it have to be. And with no zoning commission, that's gonna be a problem.
We have a zoning board.
We have a zoning board.
Have a right to say no to a style of a building as long as it falls in the zoning permit.
Or, or a type of a, just use of a district if it's in our zoning regulations.
So it's the only use that isn't allowed, and say, this district is a restaurant, which it would probably be allowed. Then they can do whatever they want, we can't say, no, we don't want a house or a restaurant or a, you know, a boat shop or, you know, a-
Okay.
As an example, so if somebody purchased the property.
Yes.
Put to restaurant, they wanna put in McDonald's just for, for argument's sake.
Yeah, yeah.
There's nothing architectural that would say that they can't make that the most modern-looking facility, as long as it meets our zoning and our site plan regulations, they can build whatever they want.
Agreed, but I can give you a perfect example while, uh, up in Maine, that I saw this whole thing occur. And that was McDonald's wanted to put something on, uh, Main Street in Freeport.
Yep.
And they said-
They designed it to, yep.
They designed it, and they said it fits in perfectly with the surrounding area, so it's not considered a plant.
Because most of those cities have architectural regulations that require-
Well, but the zoning board, you know, if, if, if they need more power to do that, I would say, give it to them. Is that what you're saying?
Well, when you say, give it to them, remember, remember that statement of the state of New Hampshire, live free or die. They, people say no. I said this last year at the, at the election, for fourteen hours we were there, twelve of it, people voting. And you could tell, you could watch a guy come in with his logging boots in, go into a booth, he didn't read, he walked right by and sometimes you can see their ballots, the no's, everyone, everything was no. He didn't vote yes on anything. And I laughed about it. And the, and the motto going up forward in this town last year was, if you don't no, vote no. And that's a fact. And that's, in Freeport, Maine, the people, the whole town, they, they, their audiences were designed to keep it in its nineteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds look.
Highly representative.
And, and we don't, we don't have that.
And you won't get the voters to change that? I don't believe.
No, I don't believe so. Just-
This doesn't fall into a historical district, right?
No, it's just called a village district, correct? I mean, we have a historical, the library's a historical building, the bank building is not historical.
It is.
I mean, look at the Gale Building down here on Concord Street, that's a historical building. How long has that been sitting there in the state that it is right now?
Way too long.
It was five years.
All three, I did.
We agree with you.
And, and we do. We're not, we're not disagreeing with you, but it just-
There's gonna be some workarounds.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, you know.
As, as we scramble trying to find people to sit on boards, as we scramble trying to get volunteers for anything, all right?
And I could be wrong, but I think if you were to sell that property, that would be a warrant art.
I think you have to have the voters, the voters have to write.
Because the-
Because the voters-
They for it.
Because the town purchased that. Yep.
Any town property.
Yep.
But, but, but wait.
This is New Hampshire, dear. That's all I can say. And we are in New Hampshire.
I thought I was still in there.
It's unique. Remember, that's why we have no sales.
I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure too. And I believe we couldn't sell it for less than what we purchased it for, but don't, no, no. But, it's a whole lot worse off than it was when we purchased it too.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, uh-
And I'll be honest with you, I voted to purchase that building, but I didn't vote to keep it a building. I voted, I purchased that building for the land, not for the building, all right? Because my feeling was, when I voted yes to purchase that building, that it needed to come down, because I felt the, the center of Belmont needed more green space, not, not, not that ugly-looking, cheap block building that was there. 'Cause that guy that built those built several of those throughout New Hampshire, all right? And he made a good amount of money renting to the post office, that's for sure.
My old post office is the same, it's more of a-
That was, uh- So, yeah, I'll say, I will read, I'll read the handout, that I skimmed through it, I didn't read all of it, I'll take it home and I will read all of it. I really appreciate you coming in with the ideas and the working to come up with ideas, I appreciate that, we don't see that very often.
Of course, of course. It's, it is, it's frustrating, it's frustrating for us as board. Um, because no matter what we say, where we get creamed, it's very frustrating. And, and unfortunately, I feel a good portion of the people that are, that are very verbal about maybe what we're doing, really, they need to come to me, they need to be part of the process, because in a roundabout way, and I'm not trying to shoot anybody down, because there's a lot of things, I didn't know until I became selectman and how things will run and, and, and it is frustrating for us. We wanna do something, oh, you can't, because RSA says this, or RSA says that. I'd like to, a few of the RSAs and maybe we could get some constructive work.
You know, and, and I keep hearing this about RSA.
Oh, yeah.
And I get it, I get it, but you know, here's, the problem on that is, you know, if, if, if we always said, well, you know, that's the way it's always been done, we'd still be riding horses instead of driving SUVs.
We might be better off.
Ha! I don't know where your time, Martin's gonna clean up.
Uh, it doesn't matter, it, it, it dissipates, dissipates. Thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman, we appreciate it.
Alright, thanks, appreciate it.
Um, so now, our next meeting is scheduled for any more public comment?
I just, I just have a question for Sharon. Sharon, we've got defense repair on one oh seven, that's holding in the next couple of weeks, but we wanna make sure you have three or four hundred dollars in your budget available, or should we hold off for the next year?
No, do not hold off.
Hold off? Okay, alright, I'll take that.
We have a capital reserve for that. I will reach out to Hillary and Fred and let them know.
We have a capital reserve for that, I will reach out to Hillary and Fred and let them know. And Hillary can go back through the minutes to make sure that we address that, but as far as I know, that's a go for you.
All right, I'll take, I'll take it out of the schedule until next year then.
No, she said, she said do it.
That's not what she said, she said do it.
No, fix it, please, yes.
Yeah, it's been five years now, I mean-
We already, we voted on that back in February to fix it, and it's a capital reserve payment.
We have a custom made that, we've tried to buy that piece a little bit, so you can't find it, we're going to custom make it and put it in and paint it.
Yeah, we looked at it, tried to take a piece on the back and move it to the front, and it's, yeah, they don't fit.
All right, so we're going to, we'll keep it in the schedule.
Yeah, please, fix it.
Okay, so our next meeting now is scheduled for August twenty-first at three o'clock in the afternoon to accommodate the, um, to accommodate the, um, public hearing necessary for the Gale Building. Non-public?
Yes, letter L.
Okay, so we are going to go into non-public, thank you all, um, could I have a motion to close this public meeting?
Make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, any opposition? None, uh, roll call.
O'Hara Travis here.
Don Pike.
Ruth Mooney?
Say, Dan.
Sharon Chaffey?